Okay, good morning and welcome to the April 18th Board of Supervisors meetings for Lake County. We'll call this meeting to order, and do we have a moment of silence?
I have a moment of silence.
Okay.
So there's not much in the details, but I do know that there was a person that was found to have expired on Highway 53 in the local area around Clear Lake, whether it's due to a traffic incident or another incident. Just want to remind everybody to please be safe on our roads, drive safely, everyone else is out there sharing the road with us. And for those who stopped and called 911 or actually cared enough to make sure that this person was okay, which unfortunately they weren't, I think we can all learn from that. We all need to watch over each other and make sure we pay attention and help one another when we can. So I want to appreciate that and also hold that person's family and friends in our hearts and prayers.
Director Armus, do you want to lead us in the pledge?
Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any extra items?
I have none.
Okay, we'll move on to consent. We are pulling 7.5. Is there anything else that we need to pull? Well, it's not on consent, sorry, 7.5 or later. But on consent, anything to pull Supervisor Spatier?
Yes, I'd like to pull and discuss item 5.1, please.
Anything from the public to pull an item off consent? Anybody in Zoom?
There are no hands in Zoom.
Okay.
Ready?
Yes.
Madam Chair, I'd like to move to approve Consent Agenda Items 5.2 through 5.8.
Second.
5.9.
5.9.
Oh, I apologize. 5.9.
And second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we've got a few minutes. Do we have a short one?
Yeah, don't we have an appointment?
There we go.
Oh, yeah.
I thought we did.
You're right. Let's do 7.4. Consideration of the following Advisory Board Appointment, Middletown Cemetery District. And this is for...
Yeah, this is for the Middletown Cemetery District. We had a resignation of a longtime board member, and Bonnie Albertson was a previous longtime board member. She's agreed to come back and help the board, so she's back on. So just a reappointment of a previous board member.
Okay.
Since we have one or two minutes that we still need to fill, wondering, is it on Memorial Day that you guys do the special event for...
Yeah, there is going to be the Memorial Day event. I know I do that, so...
Is that the calling of the names?
Yeah, we read out every name, you know, there at the cemetery. We also read out the names of the veterans at the Middletown Ratria also. So Jim Comstock joins me on that day, so it's a great celebration.
That's awesome.
Great. Anybody from the public? Want to weigh in on this? Not seeing any, anyone in Zoom?
I've been in Zoom.
We'll bring it back to the board for action.
Madam Chair, I move to appoint Bonnie Albertson to the Middletown Cemetery District.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes. Got just...
15 seconds.
Okay, it's 9:06. Do we have anybody in for... Yes?
When will you be taking up 5.1?
Probably after our timed items. Our last one is at 9:30, starts at 9:30, so probably after that. Do we have anyone in the chambers for public input? Anyone on Zoom?
I do not see any hands on Zoom.
Okay. We'll close public input, and we have two minutes for our next item. I think everything else is going to be long, so we'll just wait two minutes.
Yeah.
Minute and a half. What, one more minute?
No, we're there.
Oh, it's 9:07, okay. 9:07, Pet of the Week, Animal Care and Control.
Good morning. My name is Officer Sadie Egan, and I am here with Lake County Animal Care and Control. With me today are Officer Kopas and Lola. Lola is a one...
Want to move a little closer to the microphone there? Thank you.
Lola is a one-year-old female border collie mix who we think we could do, who we think would do well in most households. She gets along with both male and female dogs, and she loves any person she meets. Lola is very much a puppy and loves to play. If you would like to come and meet Lola, please come to the shelter located at 4949 Hellbush Drive here in Lakeport. Or if you have questions about her or any other adoptable pets, please call us at 263-0278. Thank you.
Thank you.
Beautiful dog.
Lola!
She's like, "I'm still here in the center of attention."
We have time if you want to take her on a lap around the room.
She's a happy dog. At least she doesn't, what is it, happy...
Happy tail.
Happy tail.
Does she have a happy tail?
First time I ever heard that.
Okay, it is 9:0... Nope, we still have a few seconds.
9:08.
No, 9:08, we don't... We have 6.3 is 9:08 National Poetry Month, Poem of the Week, but unfortunately, we don't have a poem this week, so we will have to move on to our 6.4 item now that it's 9:09 a.m. Presentation of Proclamation Designating the Week of April 23rd through 29th, 2023 as National Crime Victims Rights Week. And we've got Supervisor Crandall.
You're already coming up. There we go. Thank you all for coming up and doing this proclamation. It's very important, just knowing in this county, dealing with many situations where people are abused and victims are afraid, victims need someone to advocate for them, they need someone to give this information to, and then a lot of times, they're afraid to even continue forward because of the actions that have been implemented on them and the fear of what will take place later. And so I am glad to read this proclamation alongside with the Victims Department, Victim Witness Department. This proclamation is designating the week of April 23rd through 29th, 2023 as National Crime Victims Rights Week. Whereas Americans are the victims of more than 20 million crimes each year, and crime can touch the lives of anyone regardless of age, national origin, race, creed, religion, gender, sexual orientation, immigration, or economic status. And whereas too many communities feel disconnected from the justice and social response systems and have lost trust in the ability of those systems to recognize and respond to their needs. And whereas victims of repeat victimization who fail to receive supportive services are at greater risk for long-term consequences, and the victim services community has worked for decades to create an environment for victims that is safe, supportive, and effective. And whereas the Victim Witness Division of the District Attorney's Office in Lake County serves crime victims daily, providing assistance and support for a variety of their needs. And whereas the Victim Witness Division, along with the state and federal agencies, is working to improve services to crime victims to enact laws that ensure fair treatment for all victims of crime in Lake County and throughout California. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Lake County Board of Supervisors does hereby designate the week of April 23rd through 29th, 2023 as National Crime Victims Rights Week, and express their appreciation for those community members, victim service providers, and criminal justice professionals who are committed to improving our response to all victims of crime so that they may find relevant assistance, support, justice, and peace. Passed and adopted this 18th day of April 2023, signed by the Chair of the Board of Supervisors, Jessica Pisca.
Do you want to speak? I will give my best...
You can do it.
First of all, I'd like to say and thank all of the law enforcement agencies, District Attorney's Office, everyone who's involved serving victims on a daily basis. We do, and everyone does have a difficult job serving victims, and all of the agencies together, we collaborate together, and we try to be as efficient and serve the victims as much as possible. And once again, I would like to thank all of the agencies that are involved, everyone who works tirelessly to assist victims daily, and yeah, the District Attorney's Office as well, all the attorneys work hard, law enforcement, all the advocates, we have a fantastic team. So once again, I'd like to thank everyone.
Yes, I'm Susan Cronus, the DA, and I just want to say I have an awesome, awesome Victim Witness Office. They do a fantastic job. They go out late at night, early morning, they can get called out on any case, they appear, and they are a nice face, they could talk to these victims who are traumatized. And they do it every day that they work this job, and it's incredible, the relationships they form with these victims. We hear from victims after many, many years, come back and say they appreciated how much these people did for them when they were going through the criminal justice system. So I am so grateful that I have them in my office. So thank you.
And Michael? Is everybody smiling? I can't see over here. Oh, yes, great. You're hired.
Thank you.
And before you leave, just want to make a comment, that there's a difference between the justice that is served in our courtrooms and the service you provide to the victims, the trauma and the mental anguish that some of these victims go through, justice is not enough to get the support. They need to go back to the things that they were doing before, and so thank you so much for that support, really appreciate it.
Thank you.
And if I could just add, I know there was a recent multi-jurisdictional investigation involving illicit cannabis cultivation, human trafficking, and labor abuse in our illicit cannabis community is one of the darker secrets that don't get talked about a lot, but I hope we can talk about additional cannabis enforcement. There is a dark side to it, and I thank you so much for your efforts in that particularly difficult case. Thank you.
Thank you. That was a lot of effort.
Yeah.
Thanks, you guys.
Thank you. And next, we have 6.5, our 910 item, Presentation of Proclamation Recognizing April 17th through the 28th, 2023 as California High School Voter Education Week. Supervisor Green.
Did you bring any high schools? Nope.
They're all in class.
Oh, fine. We have here a lovely proclamation recognizing April 17th through 28th, 2023 as California High School Voter Education Week in Lake County. That's like 11 days, 12 days. That's a long week. Whereas the County of Lake Register our Voters' Office is committed to strengthening democracy by encouraging voter registration and increasing participation in all elections by all eligible Lake County residents. And whereas the youth of Lake County play a critical role in our democracy by helping to choose the people who will lead us and by voicing their opinions on the issues that are important to them. And whereas eligible 16- and 17-year-olds can pre-register to vote and then automatically become active voters once they turn 18. And whereas high schools in Lake County are encouraged to offer pre-registration and voter registration opportunities to eligible students by providing access to the state voter registration application online and by requesting physical voter registration cards for their schools. And whereas high school administrators are also encouraged to select one or more students to serve as voter outreach coordinators to support student voter registration during High School Voter Education Week. And whereas students are encouraged to participate in the democratic process through voter education programs, becoming an election worker, and by inviting peers, family members, and their community to register to vote and to get involved in civic engagement activities. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of Supervisors of the County of Lake does hereby declare April 17th through 28th, 2023 as a very long California High School Voter Education Week in Lake County, passed and adopted this 18th day of April 2023, and signed by Jessica Pisca, Chair of the Board of Supervisors. Do we have exciting things to say about youth registration today? Yeah, I think you should. Introduce yourself.
I'm Yessenia Lopez. I'm Senior Elections Specialist. We'll have a booth set up at the libraries for the next two weeks. The... Yeah, I have the days. So from 2:00 to 4:00 in Clear Lake Library on Wednesday, April 19th, Lakeport Library from 2:00 to 4:00, Thursday, April 20th, Middletown Library from 2:00 to 4:00, Wednesday, April 26th, and Upper Lake Library from 2:00 to 4:00, Thursday, April 27th, we'll have a registration booth set up with staff available with registration forms and any questions that we can answer.
And since kids love smartphones and websites, there's a state website, right? SOS.ca.gov, where you could go and just register to vote right there?
Register to vote.
Okay, let's make it real to people. Thank you so much, and I know we have a camera moment here. Over here, open the proclamation. Open the proclamation.
Do we have any public comment on this item? Do we have anybody in Zoom?
We do not have any hands in Zoom.
Okay. Thank you so much for joining us today.
Thank you.
And we will do, we'll take up 7.2. Consideration of Facilitation Services to Update the Board of Supervisors Rules and Procedure, General Protocol, and Committee's Policy Document, and this is from our CIO.
Thank you, Chair. Last fall, your Board had requested that we review the Rules and Procedures, this document, and we started doing the research and found that there were many different types of examples to, that we could incorporate, and we thought that since we had a new CIO, a new Chair, and a new Supervisor, it might be an opportune time to take a look again at this document, which was adopted in 2018, to see if there's any new trends or any new duties or procedures that the Board as a whole would like to consider. So we reached out to our CRC, and they recommended, they don't perform those type of exercises, but they did recommend two different consultants, which we reached out to and basically did the interview to find out, you know, what they could offer and ask for quotes. After all that work, we decided to recommend to this Board for consideration, the, let's see, I want to get the name right, I apologize. It is Robert Bendorf from RM, I'm looking at it now, MGE, what did I write down? It's MGE, isn't it? Or MRG? Wait, hold on, I'll get it. MRG, I apologize. For an amount of $6,250. It would be an all-day session from 9:00 to 3:00, facilitated by him with the outcome of, or deliverable being an updated protocols and procedures document, available for any questions you may have.
So thanks for working with me on this. I think we can always improve ourselves. This is an opportunity to be more effective and high-performing. So I think the dates in May are probably better. June, the June week is when we're doing our budget hearings, so those are my thoughts. And if anyone has any questions or wants to discuss, Supervisor Spatier.
May 3rd looks really good.
Yeah, May 3rd is better for me, too.
I know that in my experience prior as a council member, going over the procedures and processes was kind of an every-two-year thing. That way, when newcomers came in or just for review, we all get comfortable in what we end up feeling this is what we've done yesterday, so we do it again today. But sometimes, we, kind of like the Brown Act, we kind of need to get those reviews and make sure that we re-center ourselves to what it is that we... So my hopes is that this becomes just a quick review for us to look through on a every-two-year, not necessarily an annual basis, but I think it's a healthy thing for all of us to do.
Thank you.
Yeah, in complete agreement. You know, the May 3rd date works for me also. Like, we were talking yesterday, June gets pretty tight already with budgets and everything else we have going on, so, yeah, absolutely. We're all doing a million different things, but being brought back to really look at the procedures and how we operate together to help move the county forward, I think those are all positive things. So, and updating the policies and the protocols, that conversation's come here for the Board quite a few times, so, yeah, in favor. So, yeah, the May dates work better for me, too.
Okay, Supervisor Green?
Yeah, and just the selection of Mr. Bendorf, he was one of the key players during our new Supervisor orientation. He's well-known to CSAC and is a retired county administrator from Uba County, so he's been in the trenches, he knows exactly what we're going through here and then some, so I think this will be good for us. Thank you.
Okay, anything from the public? Anyone in Zoom?
There are no hands in Zoom.
Okay, we'll bring it back to the Board. Vice Chair Simon?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Motion to approve retaining the facilitation services of MRG for an amount not to exceed $6,250 for the purpose of updating the Board of Supervisors Rules of Procedure, General Protocol, and Committee's Policy Document, and designate dates May 3rd and 4th? Yes.
Okay, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we'll move on. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Bart.
So we've got five minutes. Should we, do we have suggestions on, should we do 7.3?
Madam Chair?
Or should we, yes?
Just curious if it's possible, I do see that we have at least three people in the room right now for item 5.1 and two people for 7.6. Is it possible to look at maybe 10 a.m. for 5.1 and 10:30 for 7.6 to try to give them a little bit of a timeline rather than waiting? Just trying to see if that's possible.
Yeah, I'm just not sure how long our 9:30 item is going to go. I would like to take 5.1 after our 9:30 item.
Yeah.
But I don't know if it'll be more than half an hour or not.
Okay. Or 9:45 and 10:00, at least, let them know.
Yeah. Well, it'll be after. It'll be the next item after our last timed item. How long do we think this 7.3 will take?
I don't think it'll take that long.
Okay, let's do 7.3. Consideration of Amendment Number One to the Agreement Between the County of Lake and New Life Health Authority DBA New Life LLC for Substance Use Disorder Outpatient Drug-Free Services, Intensive Outpatient Treatment Services, and Narcotic Treatment Program Services for Fiscal Year 2022-2023, with no change to the contract maximum, and authorize the Board Chair to sign. And this item is brought to us by Behavioral Health Services. Just want to come up? All right.
Hello, Sol Elise Jones, Deputy Director of Administration for Behavioral Health. April Gambra, my counterpart, Deputy Director of Clinical Services, and Christine Andrus, our Fiscal Program Manager. We had previously came to your Board to talk a lot about this contract and the fact that we were waiting for an IGT process to be approved by the Department of Healthcare Services, which they have. They did provide some guidance and some modifications to that, but in essence, it still remains the same where Pinoliville... Hi. Where Pinoliville has offered to voluntarily provide the non-federal share. So Medicaid is a matching dollars program. They leverage county funds towards the Medicare, the healthcare cost, and in this case, that match is being voluntarily provided by the tribe, and that depends on the patient's aid code. And in essence, we receive that match from them with an invoice. We then pay them the invoice to incur a cost so that we have a certified public expenditure, and therefore, we can then bill and be reimbursed via Medicaid. And any questions? That's all I have.
Anything to add? No? Okay. Supervisor Spatier?
I do want to thank the Behavioral Health Team for meeting with me yesterday. I am only going to say this is the worst process I have ever seen in my life, but I get it that it's being forced on us by the state of California. I'm going to be working with CSAC to figure out how, because it looks weird, it feels weird, but it's what we're being asked to do. So today, I'm okay with moving forward. I feel safe in doing so, but this has got to be the most weird process I've ever seen in my life, so just had to make that statement.
Wait till you see what happens with payment reform.
I sent you the informational notes this morning.
I appreciated that.
Any other comments from the Board? Okay, anything from the public?
Nothing on Zoom.
Okay, we'll bring it back to the Board for action.
Madam Chair, I move to approve Amendment Number One to the Agreement Between the County of Lake and New Life Health Authority DBA New Life LLC for Substance Use Disorder Outpatient Drug-Free Services, Intense Outpatient Treatment Services, and Narcotic Treatment Program Services for Fiscal Year 2022-23, with no change to the contract maximum, and authorize the Board Chair to sign.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes. It's 9:30. Thank you so much for joining us today.
Barely made it.
Okay, our 6.6 item, 9:30 a.m. public hearing, Consideration of Draft Ordinance Amending Chapter 5, Section 5-6, Article 1, Section 5-6, 6.24, Exempt Agriculture Structures, and Adding Chapter 5, Section 5.6, 6.25, Temporary Ag Structures of the Zoning Ordinance of the County of Lake in Regards to Agricultural Structures, Community Development, Director Turner... Community Development Director Turner?
Good morning. All right, this is going to be a fun one. Just hang in there with me. Last year, the end of September, the board adopted a resolution of intent to make various amendments to the Lake County Code and zoning ordinance that are specific to cannabis-related businesses and structures related to that. Within that resolution of intent, the board directed staff to take the proposed amendments to the Cannabis Ordinance Task Force, the Agriculture Advisory Board, Planning Commission, and then back to your board, hopefully in enough time that any amendments that were to be adopted would be in effect for this year's cultivation period. The resolution of intent was reviewed by the Cannabis Task Force, Planning Commission, Ag Advisory Board, and then the Planning Commission. And just actually finished that review last week and is here in an expedited manner before you today. I would just want to do a quick thank you to the admin staff who are very patient with me to get the quick turnaround on the recommendations in the staff report so that you could see it this week. Because there are a number of recommendations and additionally, because there are a number of these items that if the board supports them will require CEQA review, which has not been completed yet, our recommendation, we have a couple of different ways you can go for the final recommendation, and I'll repeat this again at the end of the presentation. First one is just give staff direction on your preferences of the recommendations that are before you, as well as adding any others that you may have. And then continue this public hearing to a time and date certain so that you can hear the ordinance. Couched within that is also staff recommendation that we break up the ordinance because there are certain items, specifically the temporary hoops for cultivation, that may not require the same amount of review as the other items for CEQA. And so to remain in this expedited process, it may serve the board's interest or if the board does desire, we could come back next week with a draft ordinance specific to hoops for cultivation, temporary hoops for cultivation, while the remainder of it goes through additional amendments per your recommendations as well as appropriate environmental review. So I'm going to go through, I have the recommendations from all three bodies included in the staff report, but I just want to highlight a few that kind of shown out that I think the board would like to hear about. But feel free to ask questions. Okay, so I'm going to use the resolution of intent as sort of my framework, if you'd like to also refer to that. It did go in order, starting with Chapter Five, which is where we house the agriculture-exempt structures policy, and then jumping over to Article, the zoning ordinance, Article 17. First, in the draft ordinance, I pulled all the whereases from the resolution of intent and just brought them right over into the current ordinance. And so most of that is, will stay the same pending review by county council. However, that last one that I highlighted in the draft ordinance is whereas that just stated the board's direction to have this reviewed by all those bodies. So I was going to update that to just have the current dates of the meetings to make sure that it is memorialized, that it did go through significant review. Actually, I just lied. I'm not using the resolution of intent, I'm using the draft ordinance. Section One has to do with adding criteria and regulations for the exempt agricultural structures. It was the recommendation of the Cannabis Ordinance Task Force as well as the Ag Advisory Board that we just stay with what we currently have in Chapter Five for ag exempt structures instead of recreating it through this ordinance. To keep what we've got, which is that an ag exempt structure is for the purpose of storage of feed, farming materials, farming implements, things like that. It's not a place of employment. It's not someplace that somebody's going to hang out a lot or spend considerable time. It does not have electrical or water unless those are permitted by a building permit specific to electrical or water. But the structure itself does not go through a building permit.
May I interrupt on that comment?
Certainly.
I believe you said ask questions as you go.
Anytime. Yes.
So on that part, is there a mechanism within your department when it goes past the ag exempt and plumbing or electrical is added? Is that when our, because I know in my conversation with the fire districts, they were worried that some buildings meet the criteria of the fire fees and some don't meet the criteria. Is there a mechanism to ensure that that's not missed whenever a new permit goes in? Or do those permits not trigger those fees?
Typically, an ag exempt building permit is reviewed by the Agricultural Commissioner and then Community Development. I am not certain if the standard sign-off for fire districts are included in that application like they are in all our other building permit applications, but if they are not, we're happy to get that added.
And mainly, the question is if I add electricity, is that still an ag exempt building or does it become a normal building permit where the building permit would trigger those fees?
Adding electrical would not require building permits for the structure itself. It still remains an ag exempt building permit. But, and so we are not reviewing the engineering or the plans for the structure itself, but we do review and inspect any electrical or water that goes in.
And water's limited to a sink, a cleanup sink?
Yeah, you wouldn't want to like have a full-on bathroom or something in there because then the possibility of habitation is encouraged and we just really don't want that in that style of building.
May I add that as these ag exempt structure applications come into Community Development, sorry, for the record, this is Andrew Amalong, the Cannabis Program Manager, we bring in those ag exempt structure applications and we have the building division right there. So a lot of times, we'll take a look at it before we send it over to the ag commissioner for their sign-off and see what level of electrical and water is involved and whether or not the building division feels that triggers a building permit.
We do also verify ongoing commercial agriculture. And so in the case of cannabis, the use permits would already be in existence or be in process. And so the review, right now, we'd have a little bit of catch-up for already existing permits, but in the future, it could all just go together. And so, yeah, our goal is not to skip any reviewing agency, particularly fire. One of the things that, one of the priorities that came up in the Cannabis Ordinance Task Force is prioritizing safety and also making sure that the fire fees that are due since, for protecting these structures are paid.
And may I add that that brings up a good point in terms of why we're discussing this in the first place, because of the need for an ag exempt structure to have a pre-existing agricultural use on the property. The language and the requirements just kind of leaped at that and it's up to the ag commissioner to make that determination. I believe the previous ag commissioner had a two-year existing agricultural use on the property requirement, but I don't believe the current ag commissioner is going by that metric. That's a policy that's up to the ag commissioner. However, the delay or the reason why cannabis was not allowed access to these ag exempt structures was the debate over whether or not cannabis was considered an agricultural activity.
But since the state and the board have made clear that cannabis is considered an agricultural product within Lake County, it's pretty much just a policy change. There's no need to amend the ordinance as it, or the code as it exists now. We would just allow, start allowing cannabis permatees to apply, just like any other ag So that would remove about two pages from the draft ordinance. If you move on to Section Two, it was recommendation, just actually for clarity, that the title be changed from temporary ag structures to temporary hoops for cultivation. The task force made a recommendation that the temporary hoops for cultivation be exempt from building permits if they met the criteria that's on page five of the hoop houses. as we'll, as we'll discuss later than in the recommendation, staff does recommend if the board desires to split up this ordinance and have the temporary hoops for cultivation come back next week, that the exemption not be recommended to be added or not be included. And I'll tell you why. Currently, they would need a permit for a temporary structure. It's not hard, it doesn't take long, but it does require then our review as well as fire district notification. Should that, should these buildings become exempt, it is more likely that we'd need a more intensive environmental review. So it just sort of extends the time period. So however the board decides to go, that would then direct staff as well as the timing when we can get it back to you. As the board probably already knows, it takes time to develop or to draft an initial study to go through that environmental review as well as then the 30-day required circulation up at the state level.
And may I add the environmental impacts that are associated with these temporary hoops for outdoor cultivation really fall into two main categories. The impervious surface that would be added, which can cause drainage and erosion issues, as well as aesthetics. So in order to, you know, address this with some added language, the reason why we would be suggesting that they go through a temporary use permit is that they'd be allowed to be used for outdoor cultivation for 180 days or less during the dry season. So it wouldn't have such a significant impact during the wet season when that impervious surface would be a problem. They could go up while it's dry, they can cultivate using sunlight. No electrical, the state, the Department of Cannabis Control has opened up a pathway for them to incorporate some light deprivation, but again, no artificial light, no mixed light. And then they would have to be taken down then at the end of the season before the rainy season starts. So that can address the impacts of the impervious surface. And as far as aesthetics, we could potentially add language to look to see whether or not these applications are located within a scenic combining district. So through those two perimeters, it is possible that these could be categorically exempt, or at least the ordinance itself could be categorically exempt under those terms. And it would be a less rigorous environmental review as opposed to the other items within the draft ordinance.
Also, if the board did decide to exempt these structures from building permits, that would not exempt them from the temporary structure permit required by our fire districts. That would still be required. And so even if they were exempt from our building permit process, fire districts would still be notified of the structures as they were proposed. Also important is a recommendation from the task force to include the method of anchoring these structures to the ground as part of the use permit process initially going forward, but that would also then be captured for the ones we're catching up with as well. It's important for our building division to understand that these, or to have a level of comfort that these structures are not just going to go flipping down the hill when we get our winds in the afternoons. That was actually kind of flippant. What I mean is, it's important for them to know that the structures are safe and anchored and not going to go anywhere. Following just another recommendation for change of title for clarity on number three, temporary structures for cannabis drying. Moving on to generators on page six of nine, it was a request slash recommendation from the task force that generator policy be standardized throughout cannabis regulations rather than have one set here for this ordinance and then the other set, which is still you can only use it in an emergency situation. So they're just requesting standardization on that. As far as generators, Planning Commission was interested and they wanted to make sure that there was a 100-foot setback for generators to minimize noise impacts on neighboring properties.
So it's 100-foot setback from perimeter?
Correct. Okay, then on to shipping containers, which is I, letter I on page six. The task force recommended that the shipping containers, one, be allowed as just your regular agricultural accessory use, which is already in our ordinance. Secondly, that that use, if coupled with drying, being used as a temporary drying structure, that that period of use be allowed for three years or up to three years. This was to enable them or to give the permatee a little bit of time before they're building permanent structures. And let's see, oh, and then additionally, on page seven, under total square footage of general purpose tents, it was the recommendation of the task force that it be increased to 10% of total canopy area. Couple of the recommendations, so when the ag advisory board met, they sort of reiterated their support for recommendations number one, which is stick with the ag exempt structure criteria or regulations that we have. And then 13, which we haven't covered yet, and this is a requirement for the permatee to keep up-to-date site plans in an easily accessible area for emergency personnel. This could be in the NOX box if it's large enough to accommodate that, but a lot of them are not that big. And so secondarily, it would be left on an easy-to-access spot on their site. And then that location of those site plans be conveyed to the fire districts. That way, when, when they're responding in an emergency, they don't have to wonder where the heck they are, you know, or where the emergency might be located. They've got the, the current existing site plans easily accessible when they get to it. However, the discussion also considered, you know, how you don't want to have it in an easily accessible spot for the general public, just for safety reasons. The Planning Commission also wanted to make sure, as Andrew has stated previously, that only dirt be allowed as a surface under our temporary agricultural structures because they don't want the concrete or the asphaltic concrete as possible foundations or ground covering because we don't want to lose the, the ag soils, so by placing concrete on top of them. They also, for clarity, wanted to make sure that they're okay with the 10% of total canopy area for accessory structures, but they wanted to make sure that that 10% is cumulative. So you can't have 10% of, you know, your temporary hoop house or your, like your cargo things and then another 10% over here for something else. They wanted to make sure that the total area for ag accessory structures was going to max out at 10%. And then for additional clarity, they did recommend that where appropriate, Article 27, be cited throughout. So this could be cited with our definitions when that was appropriate or like the citation for ag exempt structures then, if it was going to be kept in here at all, just be current Chapter Five. So, so just kind of simplification, instead of reiterating everything in multiple places in our code, just cite the areas that are appropriate. Those are the highlights. And so just to close with that, the recommendation for staff is very dependent on the board's feeling and direction. We're open, or we're ready to separate the ordinance, keeping the temporary hoops for cultivation going forward to a continued public hearing at next week's meeting or up to the pleasure of the board, and then processing the rest separately or... of the board, and then processing the rest separately, or however the board decides to proceed. But we're really here to get, get your recommendations and your direction on moving forward for the various amendments for the draft ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We have thoughts from the board. Supervisor Green?
Thank you. First off, want to thank Cannabis Task Force. Did watch a good chunk of the meeting in January, found it very informative. Also want to thank Planning Commission that plowed through this for several hours, and I watched most of that as well. This is a push-me-pull-you. You're pulled in one direction and pushed in another. For example, it is obviously more convenient to cite other chapters, however, when you're reading the ordinance as a layman and then you're trying to cite these other chapters, it gets very confusing very quickly. One thing this draft ordinance cites to is this common definition of what an ag-exempt building is pursuant to Section 202 of the California Building Code. I couldn't find that for whatever reason, but I did find some alternative definitions for membrane-covered frame structures and tensile membrane structures that are cited also from within the California Building Code, and those definitions may have some utility. And pulling up the agricultural building, ag-exempt building definition in 202, I think should be spelled out within the ordinance, even if it is called out elsewhere. We all need to have a common understanding of what that definition is. And I sent a gently edited version of this draft ordinance to you Director Turner, and I'm not expecting you to go blow-by-blow, and I'm not going to go blow-by-blow down that draft. There are some housekeeping changes that need to happen, but I'm not really focused on that. To your recommendation, can we break this up and possibly bring the hoop house portion of this forward sooner rather than later? Yeah, I don't think we can bring it back to a hearing date and time certain, because if we just bring back the hoop houses, that proposed amendment of the draft ordinance would probably be so substantial, we would need to renotice. But I am interested in moving the hoop house part of this forward, just because I think it's doable and just because I think there's some interest, strong interest in our community to get that done. I struggle more with the general purpose tents and the storage containers. And I particularly struggle with the reliance in, in the draft ordinance that would allow pretty widespread use of generators at those facilities, albeit for a short period of time, 60 days max for these temporary permits as they're written. But I, I go back before weed was even legal. When I was still down in Fresno, we were still fighting for the right to do commercial cannabis. Generators, generators were the number-one source of complaints for all the illicit grows that we were suffering from in the rural communities in Fresno County. Generators continue to be a source of complaints in our license permit applications, and also generators that continue to be used on a widespread basis by our illicit growers. Going back to the push-me-pull-you, there is a need for structures to do drying. I don't accept at face value that drying only does not create an occupied building for purposes of permitting or for purposes of fire compliance. They're in and out of there a lot. If you're hanging plants, you're probably trimming and bucking plants and stuff in there, whether it's called for in your permit or not. It's just a fact of life. That's what we're trying to do. They're trying to stand up temporary onsite processing capacity in addition to drying capacity. And the more you lean toward that model, the farther you get away from a temporary structure. So if we were to plow ahead with this at all, I'm looking at the generator language for both the storage containers and the general purpose tents. If we were to leave that in there, I would propose adopting the same language as we use for the hoop houses, generators, or for the ag-exempt building part of this in the 6.24. For a permanent ag-exempt building, the language says generators are prohibited except for emergency backup power purposes, and it gives a definition of emergency. I can't imagine giving greater flexibility to use generators for a temporary structure than is currently allowed for a permanent ag-exempt building. And I believe one of the recommendations from the task force was to just bring generators back, and I addressed that more holistically at, at a different time. So I'd be supportive of that too, if we just take it out. But if we're going to leave, if we're going to have any progress on these tents and these storage containers, I think the language that applies to permanent ag-exempt buildings generally prohibiting the use of generators except for emergency backup power would be appropriate. That would not prohibit them from using solar power onsite if they have that capability. But I don't want to like set up a rural electrification program that it's all generated all the time on the off-promise that PG&E is coming to the rescue at the same exact time we're trying to get our existing utilities undergrounded. So those are just my thoughts, and I know it's kind of all over the map. I do think there's a way to bring this forward with all three types of temporary structures, if we make some meaningful changes. I'm also okay with moving forward just with hoop houses and bringing these other two back. So thank you.
Thank you very much. If I could just make sure that I'm on the same page. The Temporary Hoops for Cultivation would not be considered an ag-exempt structure. It was the recommendation from the task force that the Temporary Hoops for Cultivation be exempt from building permits if they met the list of criteria that are in the ordinance. But those are temporary structures. Ag-exempt structures, as listed in, in Chapter 5, are not temporary, they're permanent. And so just to make sure that the delineation is sort of nuanced, but it is specific. And so we would not be treating them as ag-exempt structures.
Supervisor Spockty?
Thank you. Thank you for coming back. You made it. I know there's been a lot of conversations regarding this. Couple things. I, I want to make sure again, I know we talked about the, the fire fees. I, I just want to make sure when there's electricity involved, that to me is adding a hazard or potential issue. That's why we have our Fire Districts here, so I want to make sure that, that, that gets triggered in some way, shape, or form. It doesn't make sense for a barn to provide school fees because you're not adding people, but if you're adding a structure with electricity, I think that also, it creates a threat, it creates a potential danger. And so that, I, I'm, I'm not going to let that one go. I'm glad you brought up the scenic corridor, because I was thinking about that. That's one of those things that popped up a little later after our review, so I'm glad that we're still looking at that in order to see how these buildings are going to interact with the different zones. That's important. I know that I did have a conversation with the Cannabis Alliance, and there was something that was mentioned that I'm okay with offering. They were looking at the criteria for the hoop houses being a maximum of 20 and a maximum of 100 feet. Is it possible to look at maximum of 20 and then no more than 2,000 square feet? So if they want to go less than 20 and maybe go a little longer, they still have every 75 feet, they have to have an exit? Or is there a reason why it was set at 100? Just because looking at flexibility for the type of farm that it is, because every farm is different, different shape, different topography? Just kind of curious if the 100 comes from somewhere, or if it was just a number that everyone kind of sat with?
Excuse me. That figure came from the direction of our chief building official, mainly for safety standards. Should a medical emergency happen and people need to get out of that, that either one way or the other, it's no greater, it's not greater than 50 feet to get to that exit.
I believe it's 75.
And the idea was, I, I believe.
Unless that was changed.
But also part of that concept with those, you know, pre-described, I guess, dimensions, that was where the building official in the Building Division was comfortable not requiring a building permit, but it doesn't mean they have to do it that one way. You know, each cultivator is different, each of their farms are different, and they want to, you know, design something that fits their needs, and at which point we would take a look at it, and, you know, in some, certain cases, they could trigger a building permit.
Okay. It does say maximum for each dimension, and so the.
The maximum for the Building Division to not require a building permit.
Okay. Not the biggest deal, but I thought I'd bring it up. That one I will not fight for. The other part was all, all the things that disappeared in the original resolution of intent that was submitted. I get it that from the ag industry, nobody asked to be regulated, but if somebody comes right now and says, I want to do a 200,000-square-foot ag-exempt building, and all I'm going to do is store, there's nothing. And I have not seen a single county where there's not a maximum of, or a height maximum of. If they do a 50-foot-tall building right now, if the zone allows it, it could be an ag-exempt. And I think at one point or another, if it's big enough, it potentially has needs to ensure that it's built appropriately to withstand the winds, earthquakes, whatever. And so I, I just, I'm kind of curious as to.
It's been a discussion in the Planning Division recently that of the potential environmental impacts of, say, like a 15,000-square-foot ag-exempt structure out on the hillside, without going under any review from the Building Division to ensure, again, going back to the impervious surfaces and erosion, a winter like this past winter could, on the wrong location and the wrong hillside, could erode, you know, the mountainside. So there, there is some of that concern. And, you know, from my understanding, as we approach CEQA and environmental impacts, we, we have to assume the worst-case scenarios. We can't say that, well, most of it's not going to be like that, and that may be the case, but there could be that one horrible instance where it didn't get checked and we have an environmental impact.
Currently, the existing code requires that the Community Development Director review the application for its use and its size and its location to make sure that it's commensurate. So that is a little vague. However, I, I do expect that any Community Development Director or designee would have an issue with a 20,000-square-foot building being commensurate as ag-exempt.
Because I, I, I want to say that in the past, because there's only four things, and those four things are not restrictive in, in many, many ways at all. One of them is like, check your FEMA, submit a plan, prove to us that you're actually the landlord or the, the owner and that you are doing agriculture. That's very vague as far as to any size, types, or anything. I don't want to restrict what's already there to make people non-conforming, but at the same time, having some, it's been so vague that I've seen different directors say yes or no to different things. When we have it in language and set in stone, it makes it easier for the public and the director to know exactly, and I'm talking to ag commissioner as well as the CDD director. So my personal opinion is I'd love to continue to work on getting some finalized numbers, working with the ag community and saying, hey, what's the maximum-size building you guys have out there? And let's see if we can just set it right above that point so that nobody's then non-conforming, but at least we're not going to have this really strange offering where you can't really say no, because there's not a rule to say that you can say no. There is, but it, it's just, it's very vague for me, and I'm uncomfortable with the vagueness. We want to support our ag community, and we want to bring in new ag to, to evolve. And I just want to make sure we don't get ourselves in a situation where that's not what we expected. And so setting those, those setbacks, setting those restrictions on size or things like that, to me, would be a healthy thing to look into. And, and just, I apologize for the statement, but it was very confusing to read what was submitted when there's changes that were provided to us today that I was not aware were necessarily the changes. So I look forward to the next one, just because I was looking at the draft, because the resolution one was obviously the one that was submitted originally for the Planning Commission to review. But the ag-exempt still has one through 13 with all the restrictions and the setbacks. The, it still says two years for shipping containers. I believe you said it's three years. So it was really confusing to read through this when it's not necessarily what the recommendation was.
Sure, yeah, I can understand that. I took the draft ordinance straight out of the resolution of intent, but because it went to so many review periods or review groups, I, I wasn't certain if a redlined version would actually be more confusing than just giving you the list of the recommendations. But next time, when it does come before you, we'll have much more clarity on the recommendations and the preferences of the board, that's when you're going to get a redlined version.
Okay. And I think that the whole context of temporary buildings and the limitations on them is to get people into permanent solutions. There are many already available, but the timeline of getting their permit, let alone to getting their building permits for permanent stuff, just adds on to, to the burden. So this is, I think, a good segue towards where I think everyone should eventually get to. So this is a great start.
Did you have something?
Yes. So I just wanted to cover a couple of things. Glad to see this CEQA process, you're recommending to go back through it, right? That's what I've, I think that's good. Cannabis Task Force, the recommendation document that they provided in the meeting, was it submitted to the P, Planning Commission at all? Or, I know it's not on ours.
No, I just submitted the actual recommendations that were approved by the task force.
Okay.
As, in a list form.
Okay. Because I know it just doesn't seem as if some of it matches what the body did, voted on, if that makes sense.
They didn't, the task force had a meeting where the sub, the ad hoc committee of the Farm Bureau Director and Fire District and Lake County Cannabis Alliance representatives all got together to sort of churn through some of their issues and then present the task force with something that they could then consider. They didn't take everything.
Okay.
So they, they went through item by item and made their recommendations after that.
Okay, thanks. I wanted to ask too, if, I know I see the chiefs here. I didn't know if they had any input. I know that they were involved as well. Maybe I can wait till public comment, but I just wanted to make sure that I'm, wanted to see if they had some input. I wanted to see what the setbacks for ag-exempt structures, I feel it needs to be further. And the enforcement guidelines for failure to remove after 60 days, is there staff limitations on that? Do you think there'll be staff limitations on that, or do you think that would be something that the department can?
No, they would apply, if they are not exempt from building permits, they'd apply simultaneously for a building permit and a demolition permit.
Okay.
And so staff does have the, the capacity to do those inspections.
Okay. And I heard Supervisor Green talk about, I think it was the generators in general for emergency purposes, and I, I like That's all I have.
Do you have something? Because here you went.
Yeah, all right. Yeah, you know, appreciated too, coming back to the board. Real complicated conversation. The temporary structures, you know, we can, it's a tough one for me, because we, we kind of went down this road when we talked about early activation and other things, and, and we know that is not there anymore. So we're looking to try and obviously help the industry bring itself into compliance and, and be sustainable, but going to need some more work done on the structures part of it for myself. I just got to tell you, that's where I'm at with it right now. As far as the generators, I really liked the conversation of solar and generator opportunities. You know, this most likely, I think, if we're going to be drying these, going to be September, October, right in the area too, when we could have events. I think it's more important if you have a diesel or propane generator supplying power to your home, and we're having events or PSBS events, obviously very important. 20 generators or five generators, whatever it is, out on a property trying to run the, whether it's the, the hoop house or whatever they're coming up with, or the storage bins, you know, I think is just a real challenge. So for me, the generators is definitely something we need to look at. It was talked about, doesn't not let them do that, but there is some technology out there that they could implement, I think, with those self-containing storage containers and other stuffs where not running diesel generators. Propane is a little bit cleaner, but those are all things we need to really look at. I know that there were some other industry, at least in my district, there was one big processing opportunity there between Lower Lake and Middletown. That business was looking to come up. I'm hoping that the industry is talking amongst each other, you know, looking at these large facilities, so we're not, you know, plopping these things up everywhere throughout the ag, you know, or, you know, and like we said, our scenic corridors. So I think we're moving in the right direction, just don't know how we get there to satisfy, you know, the concerns that I have with the temporary structures. Understand, I've sat here right here before saying I want to support the industry, but the industry also needs to look at those other opportunities that are out there. the industry also needs to look at those other opportunities that are out there to move to a permanent solution, not a temporary solution. So appreciate the hard work. And yeah, it's going to take, it's going to take some time, and I know we're on a time schedule here, to get something passed and implemented so it could be used this year, whatever it looks like. So those are some of the initial concerns that I have. As far as restricting the size of an ag structure, you know, we're currently a right-to-farm county, that's where we are. If, you know, for some reason, a farmer wants to put in a 50,000-square-foot structure on their facility that is ag exempt, they want to be able to support that. I have always been the one, I don't want to regulate more, I would like to be able to move forward, encourage business, farmers, whatever it is, to keep us moving forward. Don't like the, I want to say no. I want to have the opportunity if it's not there, but I have faith in our ag commissioner, you know, as they move forward or she moves forward making decisions that could help our farming industry. So I'm not so much on the size of an ag structure out there with, you know, conventional farming. And eventually, all these conversations were happening. If cannabis is ever legalized at the federal level, it's going to change a lot of things for everyone. So anyway, that's where I'm at. I wish I had easy solutions for you, but I don't. But those are some of the concerns, the generators, you know, and other things. I see we've got some comments about setbacks, but the generators and the temporary solution is the problem I have with. Just going back to our intent with early activation was, all right, let's help, and then it really got away from us. So those are concerns that I have.
Well, temporary with hoop houses is different than the temporary for drying and having the generators, and that's where I have a problem too. I'm okay with seasonal hoop houses for cultivation, but it's the gener, it's that piece I'm having trouble with too. Supervisor Swatier.
Yeah, just two things. I think the final decision that ag exempt covers cannabis already helps out a whole lot more where we don't have to be stuck in that conversation. State law says what it says, and so it allows for that to happen. And there's definitely no way to change the definition. We have to follow whatever Article 202 from the California Building Code. We can't change that, we have to use what their definition is. Every county that I look at is definitely using that same definition. The last one on here was, oh, enforcement. That was one of the emails that we received, how can this be enforced? And I don't disagree that the temporary has its potential issues, but to me, if it stays longer than 60 days, if it's not following the rules, we, just like any of the, what is it called, when the approval, conditions of approval, they can't continue doing the work or the function of their permit if they're not following the rules provided to them. So maybe there's a need to add that to the conditions of approval in case that this moves forward. But I think it, if you're not following the rules on temporary buildings for that type of thing, then we need to have some way to enforce it to make sure that there's teeth to it and not just something in writing.
Going forward with projects that have not yet been approved, we have a number of general conditions that are added. So should the project propose any of these structures, we would add them to the conditions of approval as well.
And further, you know, this is mostly going to affect our approved projects. And to that extent, we are conducting annual inspections. We got through all of our annual inspections last year. We have more staff available. And furthermore, with the building permits, temporary building permits and associated demolition permits, there's also going to be the building inspections from the building division as well. So we thought about, you know, if we do one annual inspection in the middle of the season, then, okay, if they have these temporary structures that need to come down, we might have to, you know, add in a fee to their, you know, increase their fee for the annual inspections to go back at the end of the season to ensure that they have taken them down properly, which would be the key to avoiding significant environmental impacts. However, incorporating the building division and cooperating between all three divisions within community development, building code, and planning, I think we can stay on top of it.
I really like that. I think storage of the plastic, when it's out of use, is important too, because that stuff breaks down really, really fast and turns into microplastics. I've had that situation happen at my house on accident. So I like the fee and the, kind of the seasonal checkup and make sure it's being stored appropriately. So are we ready to hear from the public? Yes, I think we've got some people in the chambers that want to speak. Come on up.
So just a couple of things. The permit application, I'm familiar with it, I'm going through the process right now on an ag exempt building. And I have the distinction of being the first time that the chief building officials actually questioned the veracity of the, of the ag exemption, even though it's 192-square-foot tool shed. But that's a separate issue. The permit application I have here does not have anything about, with the fire department. It's the ag commissioner, Department of Public Works, Environmental Health, and the planning division. So it doesn't have anything on that. The thing that I have to bring up is the size limit. You talk about the maximum, there should be a minimum. I mean, I think the minimum should be reasonable too, where you don't have to come in and jump through all these hoops and hurdles in order to, to have, you know, a small, small operation, whatever it be. And the big problem with these hoop houses is not so much the building of them, that's an issue with, you know, erosion and all that, but you've got a grading permit process for that. You have an electrical permit process, it's already covered for your concern that you talked about with the electrical. That's, the building department already has that, it's very effective. Same with water, any kind of facilities like that. But you have employees in these, so you got a little, it's a little bit different when you have employees with these big buildings. But again, you have the grading permit and all that to deal with the erosion. But again, the problem is not the building of it, but it's the abandonment of it. When, what you talked about, the breakdown of the plastics, we see that all over the county. So there needs to be some kind of a, a performance bond is very reasonable, very cheap to get from somebody who wants to put a big building. You can have, again, size limitations, but you can do, have them provide a performance bond that, you know, when they leave, and I think, you know, we all know, this discussion's going to go on long after the industry's gone. It's already really dropped off, everybody knows that. And they're abandoning these hoop houses right and left. They're not folding up the plastic before they leave, they're just leaving them. And so somebody's got to clean that up. If the county has to go in and do it, they shouldn't have, taxpayers shouldn't have to pay for it. Have a, have a performance bond that's allowed for it. They're very, very simple to get through their insurance company. Or you can allocate, you know, a certain amount of the pot of gold that you have from, from the cannabis money that's allowed just for that, because it is a mess, it's unsightly, and, and it's, it's dangerous to the environment. Everywhere we build is a drainage below it, everywhere in Lake County. There's always a drainage. So anyway, that's, you know, basically, I think, look at a minimum, anything over that, you could require the permit and then have some sort of a performance bond that's allowed for the cleanup of these temporary structures that have been abandoned. And that's, that's the biggest risk, I think, in, in these buildings is the abandonment.
Did you have something?
Yeah, I just wanted to make a comment. We did something similar to that for hemp. I think it was, we called it a surety bond or something of the kind. I forget what the exact name was, but it was basically for the cleanup of, to ensure that if somebody bailed, that we would have the ability to fund the cleanup ourselves. So that, there's something already to reference that we already use.
Good morning. Willie Cepeda, Lake County Fire Chiefs. Just a couple of things, Director, Supervisor Simon, the operation Lower Lake there at the old Parker Plastics is a modeled program with the ice water extraction process. They have been from the very day all the way to now coordinate with us, just impeccable operations they have there, so totally support that one. But we do have a couple of things. It is to retain the 4290-91 compliance for access to and from. As we've seen this winter, there were several errors throughout the county that we couldn't respond to because of road conditions, and we get that, but it's so imperative for us to get into and out of, not just for fires, but these medical emergencies. As we talk about employees out working in the heat and around hoop houses, we're talking about 100 degrees outside, 104 degrees inside, with probably 110% humidity. So it's important we retain the 4290-91 standards. On the 6.24, we're good with that, but we would like to see, as soon as they change and do electrical, that we want to make sure that it's following the California Building Code, California Electrical Code, and we're notified of that, because that's going to change maybe some of the dynamics of what they're, they're going to be doing in that facility. And when we look at the 6.25, you know, that'd be applicable for the hoop structures or conex boxes. That's all kind of important, that that wiring is done correctly. We have seen countless times where electrical isn't done correctly and the, the result is either electrocution, injury, or that of a fire ensuing, following from, from shoddy work being done. The third is, you know, I mean, I'm in favor of looking at generators, they're Tier Four, but when we look at the generators, we're talking about the fuel supply, and that may trigger a hazmat business plan under Health and Safety Code 6.95, or a spill prevention countermeasure control plan if they have over, greater than 1,320 gallons of product on their, on their, on their area. And the transportation of fuel to and from and oil, that adds another component of potential hazard. And as Mr. Brown indicated, they abandon those things. We want to make sure they have secondary storage and they have safe containment and they have a safe filling operation. So there's a filling one of these hot generators that they happen to be having, four or five generators, that is done safely. And there's no spillage that will end up with more of a soil contamination. Gasoline aerates very quickly and leaves very little residue, but diesel is a very heavy hydrocarbon that stays and doesn't dissipate. It requires removal and mitigation and re, bringing a fresh, clean fill. And then I'm in favor of solar plans. Solar is a great way to go, but that also follows some of the California Building Code, California Electrical Code, and, and those require permits. In the temporary hoop and conex boxes for my department in Calzville, we have an operational permit that was, those would be issued to those folks for that temporary period of time. And I like the idea of getting rid of all the concrete, they're going to put up a hoop, put it in solar because you're not going to, you're going to cause a lot, oh, sorry. That was it, my three minutes are up. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the chambers?
Can we wait?
Sure. Anyone in the Zoom room?
Yes, there are hands in the Zoom room.
Why would he be shut off when he's trying to, I saw the intent of the timing of this on the, on the cover.
That's just, that's...
Somebody who's a regular authority agency of this, who should have, and has valuable input, I think that should be continued.
He can come back up if he wants to finish.
He should stay up.
Anyone in the Zoom room?
We have Nara Dalbaka.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. Nara Dalbaka, I sit on the Cannabis Task Force. And just want to say, since it's the first time I've been able to talk to you all publicly since our work started, it's just, it's been a real pleasure working with, working with the members of the community, with the chiefs building, the ag, and, and your, and your fabulous department staff as well. So it's just been, it's felt really productive, and, and we're doing, I think, really, really good and thoughtful work with, with the stakeholders that you all have brought together. So appreciate being part of that. I'm going to, I've got a list of stuff here that I'm going to try to, try to hit in my time. The reason that, for the drying structures, that some temporary accommodation is needed is, is not really an early, looking like an early activation problem, because that was an issue where the county was actually out of compliance with the state. But right now, the county code and the state aren't aligned. The state's actually a little more permissive in terms of where they're going to allow and what they require for, for drying structures, and the county ordinance hasn't caught up to that. We're hoping that we will actually get to that and that you will be in alignment with the state, but with the way it's currently written, there are some issues with, with that for the temporary buildings. And so there's just, folks don't have the money and they, and they don't want to spend the money putting up a permanent structure right now that could end up no longer being in, in compliance with the, with the county code, the county cannabis code. So that's part of the reason, is to, is to allow for the temporary structures until we get the, the current, my dog is sneezing, the current county code in line with, with what the state's allowed. And cannabis is already the most heavily regulated crop on, in history. So, so we're not dealing with, with issues of not enough regulation here. Generators, I, you know, I understand the issue. The problem is that, you know, power is required and PG&E is not, is not coming out to get that done. I think that, you know, some sort of a, looking at small solar, I think, is a, is a great option. And, and I think that would, you know, could potentially save money. Obviously, the plants are out in an area where, where you want sun anyway. So I think encouraging or potentially allowing for that while small solar is being installed is, is a really good option. The hoop houses are, are going to be an environmental boon to the, to the industry and the county, because allowing for those hoop houses will save up to 30% of, of the water required for cannabis growth. And that's, I think, should be a huge thing for us to look at as we're considering the hitch.
Nara, your time's up.
Okay, I've got, I've got a few more things. But I, the last thing I'll say is just AB 195 has money that can go back to the county for investigation of unlicensed cannabis. We know 90% of the county cannabis right now.
Yeah, Nara, can you get, I can come back to you after we get through the rest of this.
Great, yeah, I will wait. I've got, thank you.
Who else do we have?
Erin McCarrick.
Erin, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair Price. Thank you, Board of Supervisors, for taking up this issue and having the debate that it requires. As Nara said, this is, you know, cannabis is definitely one of the, the most regulated industries and crops out there in California right now. And as Andrew said, it is also, you know, it's subject to inspections all the time. It has the annual inspection for the county, the annual inspection for the DCC, and the ability for the DCC to give you 24 hours' notice and come and inspect any facility, distro processing, cultivation, retail, et cetera. So one of the silver linings about the regulation is that it has pushed cannabis to be ahead of the curve in terms of environmental conservation, in terms of tribal resources, in terms of generators and power use. So I think that, I also appreciate the Board of Supervisors' ability to be creative in finding solutions to this. So, you know, in lieu of additional regulations, because the, the Task Force has done an amazing job, really amazing, reaching out to the community at all levels, getting input from many different sources, if there was any sort of way to be creative as you have in the past and potentially do like a check-in, like, like has been done before, where, you know, pass this part of the ordinance and check in on it, maybe when the final ordinance gets put before the board again. So I'd just like to throw that out there. I encourage the adoption of this, because it does give, instead of moving the goalposts, again, it gives the industry something to deal with and learn how to deal with and move forward to those permanent structures or move forward to, you know, whatever it is. I also know that we are remiss in, oh, Erin McCarrick from Clear Lake, Vice President, LCCA, Lake County Cannabis Alliance. I know that the LCC is remiss in, as I told the planning commission, continual updates about what's going on. There's a ton going on, and if you don't attend all of the Task Force meetings, it's easy to get, play catch-up. It's easy to have to play catch-up. So something that, you know, acknowledge and will work on better in the future. Because there are a couple of other things, as we know, this week is, industry's 420, and I know the dispensaries and retail have a lot of stuff on their plate that they would love to see enacted sooner rather than later, so maybe there's some sort of, you know, way to do a test, test ordinance of some sort, if that makes sense. I appreciate your openness and all the work that you do. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next is phone 6205.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you very, very much. I appreciate all the comments today and all of the questions especially.
Can you give your name, please? Can you give your name, please?
My name is, my name is Bart Levinson.
Thank you.
So everybody's been correct about how quickly the Task Force is moving, and one of the directions it's quickly moving towards is exciting, tourism, onsite sales, tastings, and lounges. And so when we talk about these temporary structures, I think it's important to keep in mind that very quickly, we will be talking about locations that will have... to keep in mind that very quickly, we will be talking about locations that will have the public. And so what is set up today is going to not easily be taken down or be pivoted to allow for the public. And the cannabis task force is very anxious to allow the public for onsite sales, for tastings, for lounges. And then I wanted to say that the CDD, Andrew and Maria are working as hard as they possibly can to do right by the growers and the Board of Supervisors, but they do have limitations and can't even always get essential documents to the task force more than 72 hours ahead. And so Supervisor Sabatier, when you spoke about the drafts being unclear to you, we experienced that in the task force. Oftentimes, there isn't a roll call, there isn't a vote, and there isn't a paper document to review. It would be very, very helpful if those things could be corrected. And then more certain documents, I think, would get to you for your approval.
Totally off subject to not what we're talking about today.
Can you please keep your comments towards the topic, the agenda item, please? Thank you. Are you finished?
Yes, I have, and I commented on the item. Thank you.
Thank you. Who's next?
No further hands, other than everybody still has their hands up. So I'm not sure if everybody wants to repeat or what you want to do with that.
Okay, let me check in the chambers if there's anyone that would like to speak in the chambers or come up again. Okay.
Good morning, Supervisors. Jennifer Smith, President of LCCA, a task force member and a cultivator in the county. I'm not sure where to begin. This task force started back in August. Our first meeting was August 1st. And if I'm not mistaken, this might be the first item we've brought before you. I wish that we had had some of your input ahead of the work that was done because as we were directed to move this item towards the front of our work at the task force, a lot of work has gone into this. There was a subcommittee made up of the Farm Bureau, the Fire Chiefs, and myself. So to see, to sit here and feel like we are dismantling that is a little disheartening. Please don't take that in the wrong way. It's just hard when, as an industry, we're waiting for, we've got some pretty serious deadlines. The one thing we, like, if we're going to use cultivation hoops, they need to go now. If we're going, and then dry structures, this is, I feel like, the third season that we've asked for some temporary guidelines. And while our deadlines are not your problem, it's just, I don't want to keep having the same conversation again. Generators are allowed at the state level, and there is some specific language around that that the task force would like to align with. And the goal of the task force is to align with the state as much as possible. So we'd like that generator latitude. In terms of power and permitted power, we recognize that those are possibilities and they should be implemented even with temporary structures. But that's also part of going into a permanent structure. The goal is to get, this is a stopgap, to get us from temporary into permanent and get everybody in that direction. What else? The SEQA for the hoops, if the state's not requiring it, I don't know why we would. It's a temporary structure. They're up in the dry season. They save up to 25% of the water usage. And we can go down a rabbit hole of hoops and the challenges that we have with this item and the wish list that cannabis has, you know, we'd rather use berry hoops. Where else are we? I just think some more guidance from you guys so that we could wrap this up if we're, I don't want to go into another season without direction on dry structures. So I would like to know what the process is going to be, if this will go all the way back to the task force and then to planning, and then back here to the BOS. And then would also like to just question if the task force recommendations are going to be, maybe like there needs to be a second review before we get here.
Thank you, Jennifer. So do we have people in the Zoom room that want to speak again?
All the hands disappeared.
Okay, great. And if there's anyone, anyone else in the chambers, last call or in Zoom? Come on up. Okay.
Joan Moss, I would like to say I believe we need to do research about fires that have occurred on the property in the past and the, how the safeguards are, what the safeguards are to keep fires from coming back. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And who do we have in the Zoom room?
We have Nara Dalbaka.
Okay, Nara, go ahead.
Thanks for the opportunity to speak again, Nara Dalbaka, District 1 and Task Force Member. So I want to go back really quickly to some of the, to the unlicensed cannabis in the county. The plastic and the hoop houses, the materials that are being abandoned, these are very likely unlicensed grows. That's not something that the state would allow. That's not something that's economical for farmers that are wanting to use the same land over and over again each year. So I think that if there was an ability to get a surety bond, and it's not actually simple in cannabis, nothing involving insurance or anything that you might think that would be as simple as simple in cannabis. But if that's possible, I don't think that that would necessarily be a huge issue. The state already requires a surety bond for certain things. So I don't know whether that's a possibility here. But plastic that's left behind is a major issue for the farmer, too, who would have to buy that again the next year and deal with the potential of if there are microplastics in their pots or in their, where they're putting their cannabis in the ground, they could, that could flag in testing for contaminants. So AB 195, the reason I mentioned it is because we are talking about unlicensed cannabis. There is an opportunity. It was passed last year. It was the Senator, it was the Senate and Assembly Budget Trailer Bill for cannabis. And there's a number of ways that the county actually has an ability to apply for reimbursement for investigations now on a local level without the involvement of the state being needed. So there is some opportunity for the county to get some money back to mitigate some of the environmental harms that are being done by unlicensed cannabis. There is never an intention for any temporary structure to ever be used for members of the public to come in and do any retail purchasing on a farm. That's, the state would never allow that. They would maybe, if it was like a tent for a single outdoor event, which would be a completely different thing than we're talking about today. But this, any retail or any other licensed type would need to go through very rigorous, both local and state approval processes. And so I don't think that there should be an issue with the temporary structures becoming retail. When you have grows way out in the open, it may be possible that people will want to be drying in army tents so that they can actually clear those out after their drying is done. And that preserves open space in the county. So be careful not to think about that. And then the last thing I'll say is that it would be really great if we could at least get hoop houses moved today because the farmers need to be able to buy these if they want to save the water this year, even though we've had a decent rain year. The wells aren't replenished, the groundwater's not replenished. Let's give them the opportunity to save some water and to potentially, you know, get a bigger turn or crop in. And that in the future, if we start looking at gross receipts taxes, if farmers are able to get additional turns in per year, that's also money back to the county.
Thank you, Nara. Your time's up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I think Mr. Amalon might have something to say.
I just want to bring up a point that's incredibly relevant to this conversation. It's a ruling from the California Supreme Court on a case from August 19, 2019. It's Union of Medical Marijuana Patients, Inc. versus the City of San Diego, in which case they were looking at passing an ordinance which would make changes to how they approached retail sales, which is a conversation the task force is currently having. The city defended the adoption of the ordinance on the ground that the ordinance is not subject to SEQA and that it is not a project, arguing in part that environmental review would be more appropriate at the time each dispensary applies for a conditional use permit. That was the original approach that we were taking as well. You know, that was my understanding and that was my thought process. However, with conflicting rulings at Appeals Court, California Supreme Court came to the determination that a change in ordinance, bringing an ordinance to you, could result in significant environmental impacts and would need to be reviewed under SEQA, which is why we, you know, this is where my thought process evaluated each of these four categories and seeing the most urgent one under a certain condition could undergo that review according to SEQA and potentially have a categorical exemption to allow it to move faster. So.
Okay, thank you. Did you want to speak?
And Jennifer Smith, some of this Nara touched on, but I was remiss in saying that I do think that a lot of the fear and the past experience with illegal farming is what people are used to. It's what they're used to seeing. But we also need to recognize that this is a highly regulated industry, probably the most regulated industry in California. None of us want to risk losing our licenses. So we're not, you know, if you tell us to take down our hoops, we're going to take down our hoops. And back to Mr. Brown's suggestion of a surety bond, surety bonds are issued, can be issued in different, in an individual municipality on top of the state surety bond. And a $5,000 county bond costs about $240. So that's a great option if that's a path. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We have hands back up in Zoom?
Erin McCarrick.
Okay, go ahead, Erin. Did she disappear?
Looks like she dropped off. Phone 6205.
Okay, go ahead.
Hi, this is Bart Levinson. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you very much. We are hearing in the task force meetings from the growers that they are delayed three years out from getting PG&E hookups. And it seems like there's complicit permission already with the growers to use generators if the problem is that PG&E hasn't been able to hook them up. This county, I think, should be very proud to be aspiring to having the biggest commercial cannabis grows in the state. And so it is really proper and right to ask all the questions the supervisors asked today. Do you hear the Fire Chiefs? I was so disappointed to hear a bell ring for the Fire Chiefs at their three minutes. I regard them as people I want to hear everything they have to say. And I would urge everybody, let's get this right so it's safe for all. Valley Fire was started by one improperly used extension cord to a hot tub. That took out 1,300 houses, five people died, 17,000 people were displaced. There are big stakes here for the whole county, but I think it can be done. Thank you.
Erin's back?
Erin McCarrick is no longer there.
Oh, darn.
Just disappeared again. And she's back.
Okay, Erin?
Hey, Erin McCarrick from Clear Lake who cannot operate a phone. Just real quick to, actually Bart and Jen clarified kind of what I was getting at from my previous comment is, the task force started in August and is finally bringing something before the board, which is important and diligent work. And Bart was saying how things are going to be opening up to the public, which is also true. So maybe having something where it is, like doing a check-in either at the end of the year, like passing some stuff sooner rather than later, and having a check-in either at the end of the year or like a year from now, something along those lines. So thank you so much, Board. Thanks so much, Chair. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Now we've got everybody. Anyone else?
There's still a hand up.
Another hand?
Phone 6205.
Okay, Bart, do you have another comment?
No.
Okay. Now we're finished. All right, we're going to close public input and bring it back to the board. And we have supervisor Green?
I don't know.
I think he was first.
Miss, thank you. We're going to make sausage here today. It's going to be great. Just want to clarify to the comment about storage of fuels and hazardous chemicals. That's already addressed in our ordinance, to the best of my knowledge, and I'll look to staff to confirm that. But basically, state threshold levels of 55 gallons of liquid, 500 pounds of solid, or 200 cubic feet of compressed gas. So anything above that, you're going to have that additional, basically, there's a prohibition in our ordinance. And if there is an exemption in there, you would have to do any additional reporting for those hazardous materials. So I'm confident that what, if we were to even talk about allowing generators, the fuel storage, I think, has been adequately addressed in our current ordinance. But what I'm going to suggest is that we don't go to the generator part, that we attempt to move forward, because I do share some of the frustration expressed by Ms. Smith. It's hard to bounce these ideas around and then bring it back and get feedback and then bounce them around ad nauseam. I do think there's a path forward on hoop houses. And I'm going to focus my comments on that. After also discussing the Supreme Court case you mentioned, the SEQA findings that are on this draft ordinance, I think, are correct. There's no claim that this ordinance, even in an abbreviated form, is not a project under SEQA, but it does outline that after initial environmental review, there is an available SEQA exemption or two that would apply without any further requirements for additional environmental review. My suggestion is going to be this, basically, starting at the title of the draft ordinance, to take the first part of it, to amend Chapter 5 relating permitting exempt and temporary agricultural structures and striking the other references in the title, to amend Chapter 27 or Article 68. And the reason that title change would be appropriate is I think if the, if I understood right, that there was consensus to not touch 6.24, to leave the current definition of ag exempt structures in place, that would be appropriate. We may want to revisit that at some future time. There may be some tweaks. We do want to take a look at that. I've heard everything from maximum square footage to minimum square footage. But whatever we do with that, we can discuss that another time, maybe if there's interest in doing that. But if the consensus is we don't need to touch 6.24, then the suggestion would be to strike Section 1 from the draft ordinance. Section 2, temporary ag structures, again, I did provide a modest red line to Director Turner, some clarifications in there. But focusing on Section 2 for hoop house, I did add, I am suggesting to add, under subdivision M of 2, that plastic or shade cloth shall be removed and properly stored or disposed of at any time plants are not being cultivated. And that would be in addition to the existing language as proposed, that hoop houses shall be removed when no longer being used for the defined allowable use. Section 3 pertaining the shipping containers for storage or dry shed, I would propose striking Section 4, general purpose tent for storage or dry shed, I would propose striking. Section 3, again, if I understood the consensus right, should be stricken because we no longer want to amend that portion pertaining to ag exempt buildings. Section 4 on the page 8 of the draft ordinance would also be stricken because we previously stricken the language. So we don't need to add those defined terms. And what would be left would be a much shorter ordinance that does create a path forward for hoop houses. I very much like the idea of posting a surety bond that is required under our hemp ordinance. It's a very reasonable requirement. I am also concerned about abandoning hoop houses. I'm concerned about live hoop houses that aren't maintained properly. Yes, they can save water use, but yes, they can also increase our landfill. Yes, they can save water use, but yes, they can also increase our landfill inputs quite a bit. And so there's no requirement in this draft ordinance that they actually have a use permit application or a building permit application on file for a permanent building. So I don't know that I view this as a bridge measure to whatever's next. I know there may be some perception in the industry, but I'm not even like interested in knowing that that permanent building application is out there. As it's written here, you get two 60-day periods and that's it. And I think the sunset that's spelled in here is adequate. So I'm proposing a very, very, very shortened of this ordinance for discussion, depending on what the rest of the board members interested in hearing. The alternative would be kicking this whole can down the road again and giving some other type of direction to staff and to the cannabis task force about what we'd really like to see.
I don't know who is next over here. Go ahead.
I'll be quick. We've talked before in the past, I know Supervisor Simon and myself brought some of these requests, and we still need to work on it, and I don't know how we get there, but it's one of the important things that I've been pushing for. We still have not gotten it and not sure how we get there, but we need to, is the ag road standards. Because right now it falls under ag, ag exempt from 4290, 4291. And I would really like to look at ag road standards. There are some in Napa that was provided to me by our Cal Fire units, our local Cal Fire units. It's not absurd, but it creates at least a standard to ensure safety and compliance for when there's a need for emergency vehicles to go in while people are also trying to get out. Surety bonds, absolutely. Let's go ahead and see if we can implement that. Yes to the ag exempt covering cannabis hoop houses. Let's move forward with that as quickly as possible. And the rest, I think, does need to have a good SEQA review to ensure that we are appropriately moving forward. I know that there's some talks about potentially saying no to temporary ag buildings, maybe setting a deadline, a sunset for when that goes away. Give it five years so that we can get at least the people that are here now to get into compliance with the ag exempt buildings, more permanent stuff, and eventually, once things have settled, that it can go away. And a check-in, absolutely yes. So those are my points. I don't know that I want to hack and slash the work of the task force. I'd love for it to come back where we can discuss the temporary ag structures a little bit more in-depth, in the sense that it has also had that SEQA review to let us know if it is exempt or not.
Thank you. The current timeline, we are not anticipating taking, we've gotten recommendations from the task force, ag exempt, or ag advisory board, planning commission, and now this board. So it was our understood timeline then that if the board wants to separate the ordinance, fine, they're going forward. But the part that is removed for further environmental review will go through environmental review as recommended, or as amended by the board, not go back again for another cycle.
Yeah.
Unless the board desires that we do that.
To add to that, within the planning division, I've been assigned the environmental review for the ordinance, which makes sense, working closely with it. If we kept them all together, obviously, an initial study would need to be completed and then circulated for 30 days at the state clearinghouse. And given the sense of urgency, we can make that a priority and perhaps still bring it in. It might be a little late for hoops for outdoor cultivators at this point of the year. They might be able to incorporate something, but we can complete the adequate environmental review for the other structures by, you know, the fall drying season, so.
Okay. Supervisor Crandall?
Yes. I agree with Jennifer about, you know, having more insight for the committee before you all conducted the work. My comments are brought forth by some folks from the public who attended the ad hoc committees who had many concerns that they feel were not heard or addressed, and that they also feel like the cannabis interest is commonly heard more. And I know when we implemented the task force in appointing representatives, I desired to choose some representatives that were commonly seen as opposed to cannabis, the same way we appointed the Fish and Wildlife Committee. We attempted to keep it evenly representative so that one interest wasn't overwhelming. So I just want, I hope to do that in the future, and it's nothing against the staff. It was our decision to appoint. But, you know, we appointed people in the Fish and Wildlife that definitely had opposing views. And so I think with anything that has to do with cannabis, I think it's the same, it's the same thing we need to do, because then they'll be at the table, they'll have their voice heard, they can make these debates even further, because we all know that folks from the public have a limited amount of say or time and whatnot. So I just wanted to highlight that, you know, that's all.
So do we have consensus to separate them and bring back hoop houses? Yes.
Yeah.
And then proceed with SEQA review? Okay. Is that the direction?
Well, just to clarify, the SEQA, SEQA review of the remaining portions, storage containers and tents will vary quite a bit depending on the allowance or disallowance of generators. If there's any consensus we could reach today on the use of generators, even for temporary uses as outlined here, that would probably expedite their SEQA review. Or we could ask them to look at both alternatives, if you want to take a fuller look at it. But I, I sense we may have a consensus that we would move away from generators at this point. If we could give that direction as we examine these other building types, that would be good.
Additionally, the recommendations of the board, whether you're taking on or you're accepting all of the recommendations that were before you, or you're picking and choosing some, that clarity on that would be very helpful, because as we do environmental review, we have to have a very specific project description. And so the amendments to the ordinance should be very clear.
Okay. I, I want to get to the point where we're not using generators, but I don't think that we're there yet. I think we're still, we still have some interim work to do. So I'm not in favor of that right now. But that's me. Supervisor Spatier?
I, I know that traditional ag, hopefully one day we won't have to separate, but traditional ag has access to generators. I know I had a discussion with Air Quality District for a vineyard in my district that had penalties coming, and they wanted to have a discussion, but they're available. What rules can just kind of be applied and utilized? Yeah, I'd love to get away from it, but we also have PSPS. We also have PG&E who might be years in the making to get you electricity. Solar panels are great, but maybe that's not a possibility right away for some. I just, I think that there's something already in existence that we can maybe carbon copy. And as far as the SEQA process, I would leave that to staff to figure out the best way to move forward. I don't think any of us are SEQA experts here.
I would recommend, you know, since they are in the draft right now, leaving them in the environmental review, similar to our projects, as we look at individual projects, and they have a larger scope, but quite often, almost the majority of the time, the projects change in their plans and they make modifications as they're going through the permitting process. Should they bring a proposal to us at a larger scope, it undergoes that initial study and that environmental review, and if they make changes that are lessening the environmental impact, taking certain factors out, especially in response to the review of the initial study, then it doesn't really derail the timeline. Whereas if we were to go forward without generators and then generators are identified to be, needed to be factored in, we'd have to go back and redo it again. So going large and then, you know, taking aspects out keeps a smoother timeline, I guess.
Okay. So thoughts from Supervisor Crandall and Vice Chair Simon on generators?
Already made my points on generators, pretty clear. I'd rather not see it at this point, but.
Yeah. I don't matter either way. So, I mean, we need.
You've got to make a decision.
So it's my decision. Well, I agree with emergencies. I think that that's fine. If we, and that's already listed, right? That's already the way it is?
Yes.
For ag exempt structures.
Right. I'm fine with that. So you wanted to know if we want to bring it back?
The extra detail is just helpful as we are doing the environmental review. So if I understand it is consensus that we not go with the draft ordinance time allowances for generators, but rather keep it standard with what we already have in existence, which is it's okay during a defined emergency.
Right.
Is that the consensus?
That's what I have.
And there were a couple of bullet points, if we can give indication. There was the recommendation, I think, from the planning commission, dirt surface only for foundation. So if we're going to look at those other temporary building types, is there consensus that concrete or asphaltic concrete foundations should not be allowed for temporary buildings?
Soil's good.
Yeah.
Okay. So there seems to be consensus on that. There was a change from the draft ordinance circulated in the resolution of intent, and the recommendation is instead of 5% a total canopy for temporary structures, the recommendation is to allow up to 10% a total canopy for accessory structures. And I don't know if we want to give any clear indication on that recommendation at this point.
I'm good with moving forward. I don't know how I feel about it, but I'm, we have more conversations to have. This is not the final decision. But I think let's move forward with the 10. I also have visions of way too much going on at 10%, but again, I'm happy to move forward and bring that back when it's in full ordinance.
And last thing might be the 100-foot setback has been recommended. That's an increase for what's in the draft ordinance. I certainly support that.
Uh huh.
Works for me.
So yes on the 10 and yes on the 100?
Yes on the dirt.
And yes on the dirt.
If I'm missing anything else you need clarification on?
Thank you. The recommendation regarding exemption of temporary hoops for cultivation if they met the criteria in the ordinance, is there support for that?
What's the rules and regulation for traditional ag? They have hoop houses. What's their process?
Do we get anybody else applying with hoop houses? I don't recall seeing those.
We took the recommendations from the chief building official, who applied his knowledge of traditional ag, especially from Napa County where he came from.
Can we ensure that it just matches the same process for someone else growing some other plant? I just, if there's no mechanical or electrical going on in there, I just don't see why we would have two separate regulations for hoops. That complicates things more than it should.
Yes, with the caveat that if what we were intending, or what we were envisioning would be that they would get the building permit and the demolition permit at the same time. So that's that system that we had planned to make sure that they're getting removed in a timely manner. So if they're exempt from the building permit, if the, if they meet the criteria, then that's one thing, but we would still recommend the demolition permit be kept.
And at one point, we can look at doing that for normal ag as well, because I'm sure cannabis is not the only one leaving out hoop houses. So it would be nice to have a conversation where it doesn't feel like we can't move the elephant in the room.
I did want to offer one more thing that wasn't in her talking list, and I did share this with you, and that's the idea of when we get ready to remove these structures, whenever they're required to be removed, that we create a self-certification process by which our permatees can provide a form and some photographic evidence and all that. I know we're getting better on inspections, but the idea that we're going to hold people's feet to the fire, that they're going to get them out of there immediately after the permit expires, it'd be nice to create a vehicle for them to give you early warning that that's actually happened, and then if you do need to do a site visit, you're going to be informed by that. We had a self-certification program in the early days of cannabis under Article 72, and that idea could have some merit. I'm just throwing it on staff, so if they disagree with that, they can say so now. But I'm wondering if there'd be some consensus to give them some flexibility on that.
If there is consensus with the board, we will.
No. I think that that was something that was positive to walk away from. We don't ask code enforcement, hey, just send us pictures and tell us that you have a clean place. We've got to go back and inspect it. And I think it's the same basic compliance that we have, if, we have to be the ones to make the final decision. And again, check-in, yes, to see how this all works out.
So there are a number of recommendations that we have not really discussed. It would be helpful if the board indicated if they support them without discussion, or if we don't include them unless they're specifically voted on by the board. If I could just go through a couple, a few of the, or non-substantive, just changing titles on the sections. So, okay, we do have the required conformance to 4290, 4291, specifically as pertains to agricultural structures, so not a lot there, but we did receive, if it's consensus, we did receive direction that maybe not part of this ordinance, but maybe as a new priority to start looking at access and egress road standards for agricultural use.
I know it was in our resolution that we passed in stating that for 4290 and 4291, cannabis is ag, and that was 2020, I think, that we passed that.
At 2019, Resolution 2019-124.
2019. So I, I don't know where you prioritize that, because you just gave us a presentation for a large amount of priorities, but it's definitely something that I feel we need to get to. So I would say yes.
So far, I was thinking it's a put it on the whiteboard, get to it when we get to it kind of priority, unless there's, okay, good. Now, keep that one. Continuing down, let's see. Oh, intense, requiring that should those temporary tents be used for drying purposes? So you're going to be hanging a bunch of stuff for air circulation, that they be loaded on a load-bearing frame and not the actual frame of the tent? This was an issue that staff encountered previously. And so just to make sure it's clear to, to the business owners.
Yes.
Yep.
Super duper. Shipping containers as an agricultural use coupled with temporary drying use, sunsetting it for, after three years.
And there is an avenue for permanent shipping containers, as we see in many other agricultural areas. So I'm yes to that at this moment.
Great. It is, yes, it is already included in definitions of an accessory use for an agricultural operation. We're okay with the 10%. Conveyance or storing an up-to-date site plan in an easily accessible area by emergency personnel.
Yes.
Or some other means of ensuring the fire districts has access to that information.
It's a two-parter, storing it easily accessible and letting them know where that is. This one, just clarifying that responsibility for issuance of permits really remains with community development department. Good. 100-foot setback, dirt only, cumulative 10% is cumulative, so that 10% coverage is cumulative with all of structures mentioned in the ordinance. Great. And citations, heard an against a citation. We can go on a very conservative method, referring to definitions or things like that where appropriate. We can give it a shot and see how the board feels when we bring it back.
What about those membrane definitions from the building code? Maybe we can take a look at that when you bring it back, too.
Membrane definitions, building code?
Yeah.
I see nods.
Sure.
Sure. Okay. Yeah, definitely.
Supervisor Spatier?
And just to say, whether you reference specific code or you write in specific code, when changes occur, then we're going to have to make sure to update, no matter what we do, whether it's a reference or a carbon copy onto the code. I would prefer the reference to a carbon copy, just because the code section may be the same, but it changes within that code when there's an amendment, and so I prefer references.
That's one of the nice things about the reference or the citation, is that it updates automatically. And I think that's all I have. Andrew, anything else? And then there was another. Oh, and then. Oh, yeah, yeah. One more thing. Then also as a, put on the whiteboard to get done sometime in the future, talk to fire folks and take a look at other jurisdictions to sort of flesh out the definition of commensurate in specifics to, to what is the reasonable amount of agricultural accessory square footage for structures? It sounds like since the exempt agricultural structure code in Chapter 5 does allow for the community development. the community development director to substantiate that the use, including the size, is commensurate with the ongoing existing commercial agricultural activity, it seems as though if the board is a little uncomfortable thinking that we could get 20,000 square feet of buildings or something like that, something so huge, that maybe we could flesh out the definition of commensurate, which would still enable some discretion for the director regarding use and location, but add additional clarity on what would be commensurate, so that future directors who aren't sitting right before you today would have some idea on the board's will regarding that proportion.
I'm okay with that, but my personal opinion is it's not, it doesn't have to be a priority in comparison to finishing some of the things that are on the checklist.
It's a slap it on the whiteboard priority.
I did have a question. There was something in the draft language that if they wanted to go over that 5 or 10%, it was just with approval of CDD and the ag commissioner. I wonder if there was an increase over that, if it should trigger something else like planning commission review, or maybe if it's over that, they've just gone beyond a temporary structure and gone into some other type of building permit, so...
This would be used for permanent agricultural exempt structures, but we could definitely throw that into the conversation going forward when we did finally launch that review.
So when did you want to come back for the first part of this?
Next week.
Next week? Okay.
9:30, if it's okay with Johanna.
Is that okay? Yeah? Okay. Thanks. Thank you.
Are we going to have to re-notice?
But it would count as a first reading, since you don't have it to do the first reading today. Today was just to gain all the direction from the board, so we're going to, if the board makes a motion, we would continue the public hearing that was noticed for today to next week at 9:30.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes, and we're going to take a break. We're going to come back at 11:20. Thank you. All right, welcome back. We're going to go on to 5.1, adopt resolution, amending resolution number 2022-119, establishing a position allocation for fiscal year 2022, 2023, budget unit number 2111, administrative office for chief public defender, and authorize the chair to sign. This is brought to us by admin.
Yes, except Bruno pulled it. I didn't know if he wanted to make a statement.
So my reason for pulling this is a couple of different directions. One, I think we need to speak publicly about these changes. We obviously had a report that was made public, and I think it's important for us to share with the public all of the changes and all the steps that we're taking, rather than just going through the consent agenda. My second question was about the budget unit. Obviously, it looks like it's in the $120,000 range based on the salary scale that was provided, and just curious where the intention of the funding comes from, and especially for continuous years to come. And is this starting in 23, 24 only, or are we starting to recruit ASAP and starting in June potentially? And then my final comment was related to this, but not exactly, was just a quick question of are we, have we restarted the committee of oversight for the public defender?
I'll start that one. We have not started it. We've received two applications. We were hoping, once we have the work plan, which we hope to develop and have presented to the board on next steps in May, and then we'll convene the group, and then we'll move forward from there. This will be, it's a general fund item. It's a general fund division of admin, and it's something that we need to do. And we'll look at efficiencies in delivery of service. Again, that will be part of the work plan that we'll bring forward. And again, this will come back before the board during our budget meetings in June. But I wanted to get started, just in case there was an opportunity to, you know, fly this and then get started before the next fiscal year, but I'm just preparing in the event that we can and could, but I don't know yet until I look at the work plan and get guidance from the board.
Okay. I'll leave it at that for now.
Okay.
Did you have something?
Yeah, just, so we need a work plan as reference, so this is kind of a chicken and egg thing. But just to signal to the public, it sounds like we were committed to establishing a public defender's office, and the first baby step toward that is this item today that would create the funded position of the chief public defender, or the one and only public defender, until we get a work plan and some other things in there. So is it fair to signal to the public, and those assembled here, including our current defense attorneys, that that's where we're headed? If we approve this today, we're actually going to create a public defender's office and figure out how to populate it and figure out how that's going to align with our other partners in the defense bar?
No, I don't think I can make that statement yet. I think this is the first step in actually reviewing and moving forward to the possibility of a public defender office, but until we start operating and get this person retained to actually do the analysis and further develop the work plan and adjust it as needed, I don't think I would make, I don't feel comfortable making that statement, because again, this hasn't come before the board during the budget process, nor have you seen the work plan that's in, that we're developing to bring back to the board.
Then if we're not to that step, I guess my question would be, why are we creating a budgeted position rather than flying an RFP, so like something else we're here today for, for something else? That would develop that work plan, make recommendations, not just to hire the chief public defender, but any support staff that would go with that, the full Monty version of a public defender plan versus, you know, it is, you know, I get that we're probably going to land on the idea that we're going to have to have a fully-staffed public defender's office, but if we're not committing to it with this action, it kind of seems like we are.
We're not, and we already have retained Jose Varela. He presented to the board in March. He has been retained as a consultant to help develop with the work plan, have that in place for the event that we do hire the chief public defender. I just don't know whether it's going to be this fiscal year or next fiscal year, but I don't want to cause any delays in the transition or next steps. I'm just being prepared to move forward.
Go ahead.
I'm prepared to move forward. Nobody came to us prior to this saying it's not working. Ever since the report came out, now there's some of those conversations happening. So I think that we end up back in a comfort zone where we get ourselves in a situation we don't want to be. I would prefer to have something a little closer to us, which I think that this chief public defender would provide. Obviously, it being, and the reason I asked for the budget, where the money is coming from, is we've seen a lot of increases of demands to our general fund, whether it's jail medical, just the additional contracts we've been making with the public defenders, contract that we have, and this. So I mean, we're, it's just something that I like to pay attention to, and I'm looking forward to how that all fits together when we do the budget in June, because I'm not concerned, but I'm definitely keeping an eye on it, because I'm seeing a large increase. I will say that I'm, I get it that we need to have people in the seats for the committee, but with the report we received, I'd love to at least start getting reports, and maybe we need to have a certain report function that used to occur in the committee that could be provided to us, because I feel like I'm not doing my job, knowing that we highlighted a problem, and I'm still in the dark as to exactly what are the numbers, what are the data points, how are people being served appropriately or inappropriately that are going through this system? I just, I'd hate to continue to wait while the information that we were provided told us that there's an issue and there's a problem. And so if there's a way to look at what the prior reporting was that was provided to the committee, so that that could be provided to us, I can be up to date on what's going on, maybe we don't have that committee, but at least I can speak with the admin office, I can speak with others about it as we go forward. That's it.
Anybody else?
No.
Were we looking at that committee? Did we talk about that last time, about implementing the committee in our seats? I know that we're waiting on applications, but our seats, were we going to talk about that as well?
I don't think we were part of the committee. I think we wanted professionals and those who have experienced the justice system to be there.
I'm referring to the, there used to be another committee, am I?
Yeah, I think you're talking about the public defenders committee, yeah.
Okay. I was just wondering if that was something we brought up last time?
Yes, we did. Anita presented an option, and we did adjust it. And I can get that information to you. I wasn't prepared to speak to it today.
Sorry about that.
Okay. We'll open it up for the public. Yes?
Good morning. My name is Andrea Sullivan, and I am the co-administrator for Lake Indigent Defense. With regard to the new position, I am hopeful. You are going to start to see if, as we move towards a public defender's office, we call it a statutory office, a increase in overall cost. That is one small step. I would expect that the current contract price would increase at least 40%, and that would be conservative. And that would just be covering one layer of conflict. There would still need to be additional funding for conflict council. I can also report to the board that I have met with Jose Varela, the person that I expect will not be the chief public defender. Mr. Varela and the county are kind of working together to create that position. We met on Zoom for about 90 minutes. It's my understanding he's on vacation right now, so we haven't talked super recently, but we did talk at length. Envisioning a transformation from the current system to the next iteration, he and I estimated about 12 months currently to make that transition, because we still need to actively represent clients now. Our contract is only good for about another 60 days. We need to actively recruit new attorneys. We're in the process of hiring or giving contracts to new people, and we can only promise them 60 days of work. That's not a recipe for stability for our public defender system. We are ready, willing, and able to talk to the county at whatever time is available for them. We've been trying to do weekly meetings. It hasn't been that productive. For instance, we were, didn't really discuss anything substantive last week at our standing meeting, and then we get notice that there's this line item for the board and have no background or information as we're trying to continue our direct service delivery. We are getting more and more filings from the district attorney. They are catching up from a backlog of cases for, from COVID, for your board's information. They have three years to file on felony cases, so there was about an 18 to 24-month period where filings were down, and now they're ramping up. By law, the district attorney is fully able to do that, and we aren't able to be fully staffed. So anything that we could do to make the transition, we're completely willing to cooperate. Like I said, I immediately made contact with Mr. Varela, started talking about succession planning and et cetera, but we can't continue unless we have an extension. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing your concerns, Andrea. Is there anyone else in the chambers that would like to speak?
Thank you. Tom Feimer, also co-administrator of LID with Ms. Sullivan. I think Ms. Sullivan's mentioned a lot of our concerns fairly directly and eloquently, so I'll try and kind of limit to other stuff. I think the issue, as Ms. Sullivan stressed, my primary concern, of course, my concern is, I've been sitting here this morning, is keeping things running while the county decides to do what it ultimately wants to do. The sort of need for our services does not pause for people to make deliberations. It's ongoing, and so that's really my primary concern. There is, I do ask that we sort of be kept into the loop on this process, that we've made efforts to that, and the administration's made efforts in that, but this is kind of, this is something that I think the resolution line lacks a little bit of clarity. It's essentially, Mr. Varela is here to assist county in exploring options, but I think as some of the supervisors have said, by creating this position, it kind of sounds like the option has already been chosen, so it's not clear why we're now having two consultants on this. Probably the confusion also rests perhaps with the choice of named chief public defender. I think when most of us hear the name chief public defender, we think of somebody who's actually acting as a head of a public defender office, whereas this position, until one office is created, sounds a little more of a consultant role. So perhaps if there could be a little tightening of what this person's sort of expected roles and duties would be, it would be easier for us to really know how we can help to work with them, I think, is my chief concern, because otherwise, it seems there might be a little bit of putting a sort of cart before the horse situation here. We haven't really set up an office, public defender office, and there hasn't really been a commitment as to what specific shape that'll take, but now there's somebody, and I understand this person might not be starting work immediately upon creation of funding, but nonetheless, there's a person who's here, and it's not clear what their role is, or frankly, what my or Ms. Sullivan's role is. But again, I just want to emphasize, we're here, we're, you know, willing to work with all parties, and we're continuing to do the work that needs to be done as best we can while all this gets sorted out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Rob Brown. So before you start my time, I just have a couple of suggestions for, this is a very controversial, it may not seem that way, but to have it on, as a non, or a, an non-action item, you know, just drawn a blank here on the...
Consent.
Yeah, consent, seems pretty naive to just put that on there. I'm glad it was pulled off, but the problem is, you have it pulled off without a time to where attorneys who need to be upstairs doing the job that you're criticizing them on to begin with, aren't able to be there. That's been all morning down here, waiting for this thing to pop up. It should be a timed item, and it should be sometime in the afternoon. We, the board members, board meetings have always allowed for opportunities to be heard at night, or on a Wednesday or something like that, if it's something that's conflicting. So I just want to throw that out there, that you might want to consider that, because this thing is very, it may not affect the public, it does affect the public, it just does, the public may not be completely aware of the ramifications of this thing if it doesn't work correctly. So you can start my time now.
I already started it.
You did, okay. Well, I can't guarantee I'll leave when that bell starts off, so...
You can come back.
Okay. So again, the discussion has been about, you know, chief public defender, it sends a wrong tune, you know, you haven't decided whether or not you're going to have a statutory office. If you do, that's fine. If you don't, that's fine, too. You need to have that discussion, and I don't think you're having it. I invited the board to go up to the fourth floor and check out what these folks do. I go up there every Tuesday. I've never seen any of the board members up there. I know Bruno's been up there a time or two. Actually, I know, I know EJ's been up there, too, for certain things, but I've never seen anybody else up there. And I know that Tuesdays are rough for you guys, too, but you got from 8:15 when court starts until 9 o'clock, and then you also have nine Tuesdays that you had last year that you didn't work here, so you could also do that up there, and then court is also on Wednesday when the holiday's on Monday. So you have opportunities there, and I would think you might take it, because you have millions of dollars, and the constitutional and judicial rights of people that you're talking about right now, it's not, it's important to know where the money's coming from, it's important to know how you're going to pay for it and how much it's going to be, which I haven't seen, even seen that discussion yet. You're going to spend, you know, $120,000 or a little over on a position that is, it almost appears as though it's a consultant, but going a roundabout way of getting that consultant without going through the RFP process, so I'm curious... the RFP process. So I'm curious about that. We need to see that work plan. You know, that work plan is going to be critical and I haven't had any discussion, seen any discussion about that. The only person in this, up here, that actually has been involved is Lloyd. Lloyd's up there all the time. He knows what goes on up there and his staff and, you know, I appreciate that. But you gotta, you gotta spend some time up there and talk to these folks.
All right. Let me just see if there's any, if there's no one else in the chambers that wants to speak, we can come back to you. But we do have some other speakers here and then we can bring you back up, okay?
Okay. All right. Yeah. I yield forever.
Just like that. I can come anytime he's here if you guys want. I'm Angela Carter. I've been an attorney for 30 years, that entire 30 years in the County of Lake. I wrote the first contract that created the public defender system that we have now that was criticized in that 6AC report, a report that made no reference to these issues that came up during COVID. I'm upstairs every Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Friday, for the most part, and I see these folks at work. They work hard. They care for the most disenfranchised, marginalized, vulnerable individuals that our county has. They care for addicts. They care for minorities who are addicts. They care for people with addiction problems and people with mental health problems and people who are innocent. We can't forget that. And their win rate is fantastic. I'm very, very proud of them. I watch them in action every day and it's moving and it's good and it's for a lot less than a private lawyer makes. I was confused by this item when I saw it on the agenda. I was confused by why it was on consent agenda. It struck me as sneaky. I know that's a tough word, but that's how it struck me. I think this should be done with a light shining on it. It should be done with public input. The four of us are missing court right now. There are judges up there, I guarantee you, that are annoyed that we're down here. Lawyers get held in contempt and have to pay fines when they miss court. It happens. I would really encourage you, put these public defender matters on at a time specific, on as a timed agenda item where attorneys, not just attorneys, but judicial representatives, court clerks, the disenfranchised accused of crimes, those people who are all upstairs right now can come down and listen, if not speak. I don't like how this is happening. I don't like it to be consent agenda and I don't like it to be Tuesday mornings when we can't necessarily be here. I heard the gentleman who is the current paid consultant say, you should start with a resolution. I have not seen a resolution. I'd like to see one that talks about doing this process in a knowledgeable, transparent way with a commitment to indigent people charged with crime. That's what I would like to see as a starting point. I feel like you have an item here where you're hiring a dictator for a country that doesn't exist, or electing a president for a country that doesn't exist. This is backwards. And I think if you had input and you had all the attorneys up there could come down here, they would tell you that. This is a backwards way of going about this. Your public defender's office, by my estimation, and I looked into this when I had this contract, and this was back then, is a three to $5 million operation. You need to compare, look at Mendocino's budget. They're our nearest neighbor. We have similar types of crimes. Please do that before throwing away taxpayer money.
That's the time, but I have a question. When is the best time if we're to time these items? In the afternoon, after one o'clock, after two o'clock, two o'clock?
Well, if it is specifically timed and there've been, Tom knows this, there've been times before we went to the judges and said, look, we have this item in front of the board. We need to be there. And the judges were kind enough to suspend court for a little while. They can't do that last minute on a consent agenda item that was pulled.
Okay. Does that work for us going forward? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. You want to come up?
If you're going to do that, I'm sure, if you're going to do that, do it well in advance because these court, these court dates are actually set, you know, well in advance. And so if you were to say-
Okay. If you're going to say that much, you better come up to the microphone so that we can six, I don't know, can we, six weeks is a long time, but we-
Not when you're a female.
Yeah.
Thomas Quinn, felony public defender in Lake County. We have courts on Monday. Monday's a regular calendar, so you're not in session here. You can come up there. But I want to echo what Ms. Carter said. I used to work for the Mendocino County Public Defender well over 20 years ago, but I looked up at, at their budget and it's substantial. I mean, for one thing, you're going to have to start paying calpers, start paying people retirement. That's just going to increase the costs and there's going to be overhead costs for building and so forth and more clerical staff. They're a county that's approximately 30% larger than ours and they have a combined budget of over $4 million, over $3 million for the public defender, then over $1 million for the alternate defender. So it's, I think, $4.1 million there in Mendocino County. So I think it's a fair bet. It's going to be over $3 million here in Lake County. So that's, I concur with Rob. I think maybe people are a little naive here. I think it would be great, you know, if, if the county was going to make that commitment, but I don't know that everyone is really cognizant of what those costs are and they should kind of be aware of that before we embark down this road. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you want to come up, Joan?
Joan Moss. I've been a journalist for a long time. I've watched a lot of court. I concur with Angela Carter, Rob Brown, and Thomas, that it is not a consent agenda item. A public defender is supposed to be equal to, in profession, the DA. The person accused has equal rights, equal defense. The public defenders are thoroughly ignored here and they're living, they do a very good job, but you need to understand that this is a law. You have to follow the law. Even though you're Lake County supervisors, you have to make a responsible decision and it's a much more important decision than goes on a 5.1 consent agenda. It needs to be discussed, researched, because just be careful. You might get sued.
Thank you. Do you want to come back up?
Governor Joan agrees with me. I need to reevaluate my position.
It might be an earthquake.
No, no. And, and the problem is, and I apologize because when you're under the clock and you don't know where the clock is and you're, you're not as articulate as you might be if you had time. Again, I'm not going to question the statutory office concept. That's not what I'm here for. It's just the whole process and it's a huge process. The judges need to be involved. The meetings that we had, when, when we had them, and you don't need to wait for, for, to fill those positions. You guys can still be meeting. You can start meeting, meet with Krista, meet with public defenders, meet with somebody represented from the DA's office. When one doesn't work, the rest of them don't work. And it's very, everything's up in the air right now with trying to hire attorneys when you're having this discussion and the board's not, I mean, I, at the last meeting, there was some mention that the, the funding had gone away with realignment. Realignment never had anything to do with public defender. That's not, has nothing to do with funding public defender's office. That has to do with jail. So, you know, these are the kinds of things that the board needs to be educated on and aware of, on what really happens up there and what the, what the consequences are when it, when it doesn't work. The cost is extreme if it doesn't work. And so the board needs to be a partner in that to make sure that it does. What, the employee part of it is, is true. And I, again, I'm not going to criticize whether or not that should be it, but you're, you're not going, I can't even tell you how many times I've seen Tom Quinn at the jail on a Saturday or Sunday or at night or anything like, you're not going to employ to do that, you know, a county, a regular county employee. They're just not going to do it. So, you know, there is some value to what they have going on right now, but whatever they do, they need to be supported, kept in the loop, have the meetings at a reasonable time. And I, and I realize six weeks is tough to schedule that in advance, but if, if you did that or even later in the day, you know, you would, you would get a lot more input, valuable input from, from the attorneys, the folks that actually work up there and from the DA's office too. I think Susan should be involved in this, in this discussion as well. So anyway, that was, that's what I'm throwing out there.
Okay. Thank you. Got a lot of good input and I think we need to work to schedule our meetings at, we can be more collaborative.
Agreed.
Okay. Did you have something else to add? I'm going to close it officially. If there's no one in Zoom, we'll close public input.
So I know it's very specific what's on our agenda. A lot of things were brought up. I, my view, it's my personal view, the board has not decided, but there's two options from this position, which is to continue an outside contract with lawyers that work through the chief public defender, or that the chief public defender becomes a director of a department that hires attorneys that is then the public defender. I think those are kind of the two options that I'm looking at here. I'm okay with moving forward that, not being naive. The costs need to be there and the ensuring that people have their Sixth Amendment right is important. And again, without having, the report created the discussion that we needed to do something and even our current contractor has come up to the microphone stating, we just don't have the resources to provide exactly what it is that we need. There's not enough lawyers. There's not enough resources. So to me, the discussion needed to happen years ago, but it was happening now and I want to see a change to make sure we don't fall into this comfort of not paying attention to what we need to pay attention to. I think if it's part of the county, we're going to continue to pay attention to it versus I, many of you have heard me about our contracts. Sometimes I'm not sure what our outcomes of our contracts are, and I think it's something that we need to figure out a better way to ensure that we are getting the results that we, that we want or that we kind of promised the public in paying some of these contracts. So I'm comfortable with moving forward. I do want to make sure that we have a very cohesive conversation between our current contractor and the county because the transition is going to be the most important part of how do we not falter for those that are expecting to be, to have a public defender at their side. I want, that, that to me is really important, that the transition is part of the conversation between LID and ourselves to ensure that it stays steady until we completely pull and, and put on the green light to move forward for the next step. The contract, it's correct. It is June 30th. Can I ask what the status is for bringing that back to us? Because obviously, we're not going to be ready for any substantial transition or change by June 30th. So just curious where we are with that.
We need to, excuse me. We need to set up a follow-up meeting with LID on that. I mean, they've been in court and we changed meetings. It's been, it's been difficult to connect, but you know, we're making effort to it because I can't make it six weeks out, you know, put that item out six weeks out because that's really close to the deadline. But we'll try to make it in the afternoon to come back before this board or an extension.
In my recollection, we've had amendments to the contracts with LID before. I'm not certain that it required a whole lot of them to show up. I think it's, it seemed simple before to just extend or amend whatever it is that we did. But obviously, if it gets closer to June 30th, we're going to see some of their lawyers jumping ship because they don't want to lose their job. And so the, the sooner this comes back to us-
Yes.
-the more we're not going to keep going deeper into the, the report that we received where the problems are only exacerbating versus either continuing to be the same or getting better. But I think that if we wait too long, we set ourselves up for not going the direction that we are all intending to go. So those are just my comments. We need to make sure that we have a good working group put together. I'd love to get that report so that we can pay attention ourselves rather than keep waiting and keep waiting and keep waiting with no information. And I want to see that contract coming back to us ASAP.
Yeah, it does need to come back. Yeah. Okay. Anyone else?
No. In complete agreements with the contract, getting back here as soon as we can and, you know, moving forward. Yeah. Complicated conversation, but I think, as we said, if it's inclusive, I think we're going to be all right moving forward. So appreciate the comments today and heard them. So hopefully we can work through that as a board. And all the ultimate deal here is to make sure that those folks need that representation up there to get it, especially our most needy, because we all know, especially coming from the tribal community, if you just look at the history here in Lake County, we've got plenty of family members that have got long, long terms here. So we need to make sure that all underrepresented get the same, you know, representation in those courts. So it's very important.
Supervisor Green?
Yeah. Just want to acknowledge many of the comments made today and definitely the contract needs to get back for, and involving the courts, it's difficult. Afternoons are better, but unless court's out of session, be hard to get all the bench down here. So I'd also be opening a, of a special meeting with, with our bar and our bench, because this is important. And I think it is fair to infer, although not presented as such, that if we move forward with this position, it signals that we are definitely moving in the direction of establishing a public defender's office. And I don't know that that's a bad thing to signal because I definitely think that's the direction we need to be moving in. The actual scope of work of this position if hired may very well be consultant de jour for about the first six months. No? I'm getting a shaking head. Anyway, I want to support this. I think we do need to get boots on the ground and that point person, whatever evolves out of this, is going to be able to interface with our existing defense bar and the other legal community and come up with those best ideas. So baby steps. This is a big step, but it's still a baby step. So I'm going to support it on that basis.
Okay. Did you have something?
Yeah. I just wanted to ask, is there, is this need to happen immediately or can we push it to a later date, like next week and have it at like two or, or something of the like? Or is this something that just needs to happen like immediately?
Well, I'd like to move forward on this and then start on the contract and meeting with them and then working on the work plan.
Okay. I was just asking.
Yeah, I would like to move forward.
Should we open public input again?
I just, real quick question. Is there a job description? Because I'm not aware of ever a job, a position being created without a job description. There certainly wasn't one in the agenda. It was just a resolution. It was the only thing that was available to the public.
Yeah, this was just for the allocation. We did bench a job description. It has gone before, between ourselves and the county council. I received final form yesterday, but it is-
It just wasn't included to the public, so it wasn't, sure. Okay.
Okay. Action. Did you have something?
If there's nothing further, Madam Chair, I move, we adopt the resolution. I'm, I'm sorry, I offer the resolution.
Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Crandall?
Yes.
Supervisor Green?
Aye.
And Supervisor Pyska? Yes. Okay. Thank you. Thank you all for taking your time today to join us. Your input's been really valuable. So we have, it's just about noon right now. We have two open session, session items and two closed session items. Do we want to take that after lunch?
I would like to take up what the fire chiefs have been waiting for.
Yeah. Is it, how long do we, well, I don't know how long.
Even if we go to 12:30, that's all right.
Okay. All right.
It's my thoughts on it.
Perfect.
I agree.
We can still buy you lunch at lunch.
Yeah, we can still have lunch together. Okay. So then this item is our seven point six, consideration of contract with Endpoint EMS Consulting LLC to assess the interfacility transfer IFT and local emergency medical service agency LMSA services in the amount of $150,000 for the term of April 3rd, 2023 through December 25th, 2023, and authorize the chair to sign. And this is brought to us by Health Services.
Good morning, Board, and hello, community. Yeah, so we did a thorough second RFP process for our Health Services, IFT and LMSA organizational structuring over the past year and some changes I've been here. Over the past year and some changes since I've been here, it's clear to me that there's a need to get a general understanding of where we are, so where we can go. Bruno, you highlighted, um, something important to me, and it's, it's getting the reports, ensuring that we're not left behind, getting the data. So our Inter-Facility Transfer System needs to be assessed. Endpoint has a record of EMS development, and they have a special niche in, uh, public health. Nancy, this wasn't done in isolation, this was done in collaboration from constituents, um, within the county, I believe, uh, seven people total, including myself, um, two of the most, what I consider arguably, uh, the most reputable physicians in Northern California, uh, several directors, and, uh, several esteemed community members who are highly engaged. And we went through this process, and we followed, um, the policy procedure, got all the Is, crossed all the Ts, so I bring to you today, uh, the candidate that was selected through the RFP process by the panel, Endpoint Consulting.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Uh, thank you. Um, I'm not exactly sure where this needs to go. At this moment in time, I'm definitely not looking to move forward and say yes. I don't know if this needs to restart the RFP process, or just a, a no vote, but there's, there's some very significant confusion in the RFP process. Um, I know that, uh, and, and I have all this in my emails, um, there was some concern from our local fire districts on the process. Uh, I know I spoke verbally, uh, and through email to, uh, Director Portney. Um, it was told to me that the, there was no letter of intent that was submitted, um, to any of the RFP proposals, um, and on 11/14, there was an email, uh, that arrived from Chief Seansio requesting an official appeal. Um, I, again, uh, mentioned to the fire chiefs that at this moment, there is no appeal process, because there's no, uh, letter of intent that was submitted. Uh, also, an email from Director Portney stating the same, um, right here, uh, "The public record available is the updated RFP, soon the letter of intent and proposals will be available to the stakeholders." Uh, that was 11/15. Uh, I then received a copy of the letter of intent, uh, that stated, uh, the $93,000-something dollar for the proposal. If you look at the proposal, that's what it's for, uh, that's, that same amount, but it also said that 11/14 was the final date at 5:00 PM to submit any appeals. Uh, on the letter of intent that we have in our packet, it says $150,000, there's a new phase four that was not requested in the RFP, or wasn't put in the proposal, I don't know if it was in all of the proposals, or just at least the one that we're being shown, uh, that phase four is not involved in that. Uh, but when you look at the letter of intent, it says that it's $150,000, and it says that it was November 8th that was the last day to submit an appeal. That just leads me to a great number of confusion and frustrations, um, to misunderstand or not understand, or being led to understand, uh, a certain thing when that's not what I'm seeing. So, to me, this whole RFP process is messy. Uh, I've requested, um, to look at all the other proposals, I believe there was five that was received, at least if I remember the memo correctly, that's what was stated, uh, and I, I have not received thus far any of those proposals, to be able to compare and contrast, uh, what was proposed compared to some of the other agencies, uh, that also submitted their proposals. So, at, at this moment in time, again, I don't know if we restart the RFP process, um, which I have certain, um, reasons to say that might not be the right track to take, um, or just say no today, but I'm definitely not able to move forward, as I am utterly confused by the documentation and process that has occurred.
So, I, um, have a question on where the $150,000 came from, when we've got $93,500 in this proposal.
Great, I'd love to answer a series of those questions. So, when we do an RFP process and a candidate is selected, we submit a letter of intent to the individual who was selected. Unfortunately, um, it was leaked to people outside of who should have received that until, um, we could have seen this RFP process through A to Z, and, respectfully, people were asking for information that weren't privy to information, because it wasn't public record yet. I'll digress. Once we submitted the letter of intent, we have to go through contract negotiations, make sure that the applicant is still interested, and they're able to, uh, complete the scope of work, and, in the RFP, it does say that, um, uh, price could vary, so, that's when we go into the contract negotiations with, uh, Anita and team, to, um, outline specifically the health department's needs, to be able to get a full scope assessment as a foundation to what we can build on, with our community stakeholders' feedback input, to ensure that we're providing adequate services to our constituents. So, because of a leak of, um, information that was not supposed to be provided to the public until the contract had been negotiated to present to the board, uh, we, we got into this, we got into this mess. But, the quality of the RFP process from A to Z on the health department's side, and the panelist's side, and the candidate's side, was above approach. So, um, if we look at the record, which I clearly outlined and submitted, um, there is, uh, no, um, pickups or barriers. Supervisor Bruno, you should have in your email right now, um, as well as Supervisor Pyska, and, um, um, the rest of the team, the, uh, candidates who submitted, and the scoring and ranking sheets of all those who participated in the RFP process. Um, and the reason why I'm bringing this to you today, rather than several months ago, is because there was an investigation that needed to take place, to ensure that this process was followed, and to my knowledge, it has been, so, I can't encourage you to move one way or another, but the sanctity of this process was followed. And again, this is a baseline for the health department to build on, to be able to engage our stakeholders and partners, to meet the IFT need. Um, so this is just the baseline on which we can build, so I would encourage it.
And the contract amount?
Uh, rounded out to 150K total, after contract negotiations, which were then signed by Anita and sent back to the contractor for consideration.
Where's that documentation? Because what we're seeing is the $93,500.
It should be in your, um, not to exceed 150, and it should be in the, uh, original item. Okay. In the contract.
I, I don't understand how we go from $93,500 to not to exceed 150,000. If there's change orders, then we would approve them, or overages, we would approve them, but that's a pretty big amount to just round up.
Not to exceed, so if there are hiccups, natural disaster, um...
Yeah, all those things that you would bring back to us, I would think, for a change to the contract or an addendum.
Well, the, contract is what it is, it hasn't been changed after it was signed by Anita, and then again, signed by the current attorney.
Okay, Supervisor Green?
Yeah, thank you. I'm looking at the draft contract, and I think where the disconnect might be is on page four, uh, under phase four, I think, uh, 1.4 correctly, uh, describes the scope of work in the RFP, I think 1.5 pertaining to the, uh, the MOOC, and some review of that operations, potentially is an add-on, uh, that is outside the scope of the original RFP, um, but I'm not gonna go down into the weeds on that. Um, uh, ju- just in the interest of time, uh, at, and, uh, we, we can loop in County Council or, or CAO Parker at some appropriate time, but I, I think it's fair to say there were procedural irregularities, uh, in the letting of this RFP, uh, not, you know, certainly not on purpose, you know, I'm not blaming anybody, not pointing any fingers, uh, to Supervisor Sabatier's question about whether we should just, uh, uh, bring it back and, and try, take another bite at the apple, or just let it go, I'm, I'm definitely of the opinion, taking another bite at the apple. Um, but this RFP, I think, has had procedural irregularities, including, uh, at least one Public Records Act request that was not timely fulfilled, uh, which made it difficult for people in the public to analyze what's going on. Um, yes, I belatedly got those, uh, other proposals, uh, today, um, but that doesn't really open up, uh, any public confidence that we've done our due diligence, and that our, uh, our RFP process has been done with full transparency, uh, and I just want to do that to save time. You know, I know there's, uh, been talk of an appeal and stuff like that, I don't think we're reaching that today, um, and I don't think we need to dive into questions of standing or something like that. I, I just think, based on the available record, uh, we failed in providing a fully transparent and compliant, uh, RFP process, and so can't support it moving forward today, uh, but very interested in, uh, looking at the glass being half-full, looking at what the goal was of the RFP, uh, taking a look at those hard issues, which are hard issues, IFT and LMSA. Uh, allegedly, I'm involved in that, because I'm on emergency, Emergency Medical Care Committee, but, um, that's been kind of bumpy, and, and now there's other balls in the air about LMSAs and IFTs and stuff like that, that I'm not privy to. So I can't really speak to the bigger issue of the wisdom of our current LMSA, or the problems we're having with IFT, uh, the subject matters of this RFP, uh, I think are very appropriate for further investigation, and bringing back, uh, another bite at that apple, I think is appropriate at some time in the near future. Um, but this particular RFP had issues, and I think we'll hear some of them here today, uh, but again, I don't want to belabor the point, I just think the point is that this one's not gonna fly, in my estimation, and we'll see what the rest of the board says, um, but that doesn't negate the need to continue to plum, uh, plum, and, uh, try to get some forward progress on these issues.
Yeah, and I would just like to add a, you know, context, you know, because of a breach in our data internally, within the county, um, it did create quite an issue. Again, I, I, I must express that the validity in the process was followed. I can't control who shares documents outside of, uh, confidential documents, um, outside of the department, but, you know, those individuals were, um, held accountable for those actions, but the, the, the process of our RFP, and this need for the health department, was, um, fluid. And so when documents are shared before they are made public record, before contract negotiations can be done, before, um, other candidates are made aware, right? Um, that creates a problem, so, once the contract was signed, as it is now, as it has been, that's when a seven-day period opens up for everyone to review, the candidates review, the contract, review the scoring sheets, and then give their opinion, not when an inside leak happens, someone hypothetically says someone is chosen, and then people start coming to me asking for records. I can't get that information, especially when they're confidential. That way, I protected the sanctity of this process, to get us to where we are today.
Supervisor Sabatier?
So I wholly disagree with that whole last part, it says, uh, by the date of the letter of intent, and the letter of intent said that the last date was the 14th, I have another one that says the 8th, so I, this process is not that process, that process was during the letter of intent, and I think that any...
But that's for, that's for...
Hold on, I'm still speaking. Um, and I think that for any RFP, uh, yes, there should be negotiated terms, uh, because you want to work with the consultants, and maybe add or take away things, depending on their strengths and weaknesses, or anything new that may have came up, uh, but to increase it by more than 50% at that point, uh, my opinion is of the, um, direction, start over and, and redo the RFP, because maybe you would have found a different agency to be more fulfilling for the additional work that you're requesting to be done. Um, the RFP process is to ensure equity, uh, to ensure transparency, and when there's an increase of more than 50%, uh, negotiated with one specific agency, rather than all of the above that would submit a proposal, I think that defies the purpose of the RFP. Uh, so again, um, today, I, I'm planning to just say no.
Yeah, so, the rebuttal is for the candidate, it's not for a resident who shouldn't have information on this process, the rebuttal is...
And, and Director Portney, I, I get that, but the dates and the comments, and even your comment now of when that appeal process, uh, appears, seems to be all over the place, uh, which, again, increases my confusion of this process versus solidifies what the process was.
I guess maybe we could backtrack, have we, have we, should I have attached the RFP process for clarity? I mean, I, I can't express more, uh, wasn't, I mean, I have an outline here that I'm looking at, that was bullet pointed, date, time, followed strategically, I can't help that documentation is leaked, and I can't share certain information with external candidates not involved in the process. Um, so, I followed it, but it seems like this process is being penalized, because I followed the rules of the RFP process.
Okay, Supervisor Green?
Yeah, and again, I don't, this is not gonna be a debate here. I understand the concerns about what an appellant might have, another bidder might have on this, and whatever leak happened that you're referencing may have complicated that, but there's another part of this proposal, uh, that after the bids are open, um, those responses basically do become public record, unless, uh, the bidder has pre-marked some proprietary information that's not disclosable. Um, there was a public records request, in fact, if it wasn't titled as such, um, people of, of the general public do have a right to be taking a look at those documents, even if they're not bidders, even if they don't have a direct financial interest, they may not have the ability to mount an appeal with any standing, but they have a right to look at it. And so, whatever other hiccup in the process, and whether it's defensible or not, that part of the process was clearly not followed, and that deficiency in and of itself is concerning enough, that...
Yeah, they can't.
Uh, I'm just saying.
Yeah, they can't.
We, we don't get to pick and choose which parts of this process we follow, and if one part of this process was not followed, as appears clear to me, and again, we can reach out to County Council at some appropriate time, then, that we don't have much to talk about. We either followed the process to the letter, or we did not, and, and by my estimation, we did not, and, uh, by at least one of the supervisors' estimation, we did not, and it doesn't really spend a lot of time going into which bullet points we didn't hit, we just didn't hit all of our, all of our targets on that.
They can't, people can't ask me for record, once it's for the county, you have to go through a public records request, so I can't, so, I can't give... So I can't, I can't give a random resident internal information because it's confidential information. So if anyone wants to go to the county to do a public records request, by all means. But it's not, I can't give information. If someone were to write me an email and say, hey, I want information on X, Y, and Z, they need to go through the county process. Hence why I can't and will not share information outside of county's purview, just to give context of why information was not shared.
Okay.
If it was not confidential.
I'm going to, we have, I heard a microphone click on over there.
Yes, thank you. So I'll start with Lake County Code, section, the purchasing ordinance, section 2-41 in particular, 2-41.1 sub-I, where it says that a tabulation of all bids received, whether accepted or rejected, shall be opened for a public inspection during regular business hours for a period of not less than 30 calendar days after the bid opening. Sub-J of that same section states that the assistant purchasing agent or purchasing agent shall submit a copy of the tabulation of all bids received to the Board of Supervisors together with their recommendation for award. Just in general, all records maintained by the county are public records. There are plenty, several exceptions to the disclosure of those records. That way warrant exclusion or possible redactions. But that's all governed by the Public Records Act under the government code.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Does that mean like while the, while the director or agency is in the process, it could still be viewed or does that just didn't?
It would be at least 30 calendar days after the bid opening. The tabulation of all bids received shall be open for public inspection. So there is a 30-day period, yeah, after the bids are open, under, just under the county's purchasing ordinance for formal and sealed bids.
Okay, thank you. All right, I'm going to open it up for public comment. I know we have some people in the room.
Good afternoon. Mike Siancio, it's Fire Chief with North Shore Fire. I have to say, I don't think this process was followed either. I'm the one that protested it from the beginning. There was a date set right after the intent to apply. It's hard to protest something specific when you don't have any records. So I believe that all the bids, once they made, the committee made their decision, the bids were public record. And I requested those public records, but the protest time, the appeal time was so short, seven days, that we, I couldn't get the records, number one, and number two, have enough time to review them. So I appealed it based on not being able to get the records to see what the scorers and the committee were looking at. I know at least one consultant that bid also requested public records, and they did not receive them either. They received score sheets, but they did not receive the proposals. It's hard to, it's hard to appeal a process when you can't see after their public record, when you cannot see what you're up against. So they did not make an argument for it because they didn't know what to argue. I don't believe this was very transparent all the way through. I agree and have questions. I think Chief Sepet is going to, more on the money side. But I believe that there is a difference between the cost of the consultant and what is actually being requested. So that's all I want to say for right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Hi, good morning. Chief Sepet, Lake County Fire. The first RFP, I was on the panel, and then they aborted that entire process. We were guaranteed, as a Fire Chiefs Association, to be a part of the second RFP to go out. We are the sole providers of EMS in the county and have been consecutively for 19 years. We had no input on this whatsoever. So the $93,000, we're saying there are $56,500 going, you know? And when I look at the Mohawk operations, we have to reflect back to the Clayton Fire and the MEU. You know, during the Clayton Fire, we evacuated the hospital, we brought an Outta County ambulance strike team in. During the MEU, we brought three strike teams in to evacuate Lakeport, Calseville, two skilled nursing facilities with 90 patients, Sutter Lakeside Hospital, and the jail. Fast forward, as they're repopulating, they're going to evacuate the entire North Shore plus my district. I had 21 ambulances and the San Francisco MCI bus at my station that was coordinated by public health staff and the fire rescue organization of the county. Very well done. So I'm not sure why we're looking at somebody else to come in and run the Mohawk operations when there is adequate staff that have been in the fight and done this. We decompressed during the COVID. We, you know, fire service stepped up during COVID. We did testings, we did vaccinations, all coordinated. So I'm not sure why we have to bring somebody else in as another consultant to show them their job. They've been boots on the ground. And I am a little bit frustrated that, because this does impact us and the communities we serve. And last year, we ran 14,277 calls. That equals 39.1 calls every 24 hours in the county. My department alone ran 5463. That's 14.9 calls my shift runs every 24 hours. And we need to be a part of this. And I don't feel that we were in any point in time ever, ever contacted and said, hey, we want your input. And the individuals on, I know two of the individuals, and they're like, not sure why we're on there, but this is kind of what we did. Betsy Khan and Justin Gaddy, both very good friends of mine. They're like, not sure why we're on there, but this is kind of what happened. So I just wanted to tell you that I think the Mohawk, the public health, the staff that is there, they are very capable of doing their job, and they have done it for years. And the Fire Chiefs support what they have done. And I think as far as this RFP going out, the Fire Chiefs have hired AP Triton, and we're doing the kind of the exact same thing that you guys are doing. And I advised Supervisor Sabatier that we were, the delay, 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 so we hired our own consultant at about $70,000 that Fire Chiefs paid for out of our own pocket. That money could be better spent to pay North Coast EMS with a local EMS liaison. Morgan Fox has been doing an amazing job. I'm getting my people, their five call in. They submitted eight o'clock in the morning by 10 o'clock that morning. I have an email from Wendy Chapman going, your personnel are good and ready to go. We recently had a meeting with the hospitals, amazing meeting, the best one I've been into in 35 years of addressing IFTs. I think it was the most positive... Okay, I'm done. Most positive we had so far.
Okay. And feel free to come back after everyone's had their turn.
I'd say good morning, but it's good afternoon, Supervisors, Madam Chair. Patrick Wright, Slateport Fire. Director Portney referenced leaks. It's not a leak when it's public information. I echo your comments Supervisor Green. This process, I echo my fellow chiefs, this process was not above board. It is tainted. It is tainted from start to finish. This is the second process we've gone through that has been tainted. And that reflects extremely poorly on the director that's releasing the RFP. Follow the rules. They're very clear. And it's not amateur hour when you're at this level. It's important that we are doing things above board, that we are very public with how we are doing our business. The Brown Act drives that. The government code behind that drives that. And just our standing as government entities in the state of California drive that. We can't have these hidden processes. You have subject matter experts that have not been consulted, that have not been brought into the process with the chiefs of each of the districts in this county. And quite frankly, I resent that, that we continue to be shut out, no open communications, and then not only that, denied public information from start to finish. Hiding behind the term leak, stating that we bring in, and I've spoke with stakeholders who are unnamed, and quite frankly, I have to question, you know, their professional contact within the county and within the industry that's being called into question. In this case, the IFTs, inter-facility transports, ambulance, EMS, the Mohawk, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Other than two physicians, I have no idea who those folks were. I just would go to you, Supervisors, and set it for, on a go-forward basis, what the tone and what the tenor is going to be when we do RFPs, especially when it comes out of this department and out from this director. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you. We have hands up?
We have Jen.
You can unmute, state your name, and you'll have three minutes.
Hi, good afternoon, Board. It's Jen Baker. I wrote out a succinct statement to keep myself on time, so some of it's been addressed. I apologize, but I'm just going to run through. Number one, although the attached memo states a panel voted on the several proposals, it provides no information on the panel. Can you please advise the panel makeup and were there any members of fire, private, or air ambulance on this panel? Number two, reviewing the attached RFP and awardee proposal, the specifics needs listed in the RFP and services and proposal align section for section. However, the attached contract notes an additional service in Exhibit A, Section 1, subsection 1.5 for MOAC support, noting that endpoint through its subcontractor will provide these services A through E. MOAC consult is not referenced in the original RFP or awardee proposed services. Question two, can you please advise who this subcontractor that will perform this function will be? Number three, the only reference to cost of services in the agreement is in Section 3 stating not to exceed $150,000 max compensation. I refer to the awardee proposal for the cost located on page 13 and see 93.5 is total, is listed inclusive of tentative need for Phase 4, all insurance, wages, overhead travel, and operating costs. Noting the scope of work beyond items identified in proposal will be mutually agreed upon and charged an hourly rate of $275. The proposal and max comp agreement vary by 56.5. Is this 56.5 the cost of the additional subcontracted MOAC service? Question four, if the answer is yes, question four A, what is the justification to pay more than twice the hourly rate you have been paying for identical service in the recent past? And question four B, can you please explain how this 56.5 subcontract service not referenced in the original RFP or awardee proposal adheres to the county purchasing policies, Section 2-39.1 subsection D, that specifically states for expenditures in excess of $50,000, written sealed bids are required and said bids shall be advertised? The MOAC contract support was initiated in early January 21 as a short-term agreement to provide rural reinforcement and extra support for new health department leadership staff, but now has three amendments to original agreement, one additional short-term agreement, and one emergency agreement spanning a year's worth of time. Assuming all agreements were fully billed, the MOAC consultant services to date have been invoiced for $105,000. Historically, these services were performed by the Department Head of Health Services and the P...
Your time is up.
Okay.
Thank you. Do we have another hand up?
No, the hand went down.
Okay. Any other public comment? Okay, we'll close public comment and bring it back to the Board. Supervisor Green.
Yeah, I just want to distinguish, this is complicated stuff. So the proposals are public record at a certain point in time. So immediately after the bid opening, when there's the appeal period running for other bidders, there is one set of rules that applies, and the proposals are not public record at that point. A little bit later, after the 30 days or whatever our code calls for, they do become public record. And I do think any request for information could be inferred as that and could have been complied with or at least recommended to go file a Public Records Act request. It's complicated stuff. And just because you don't have standing as a potential appellant doesn't mean you don't want to have good information. So getting a better understanding out of today, hopefully, we can all, we can all start leaning on County Council a little bit more and say, okay, here we are at this point in the bid process, you know, what can I get? Here we are 30 days later after the contract's been awarded or is being negotiated, what can I get? I don't claim to have a full understanding of that. I hope nobody else does here. And it sounds like maybe we have one process for capital projects and another one when we're putting out proposals for professional services. So there may be some variations on that theme. So, you know, again, procedural irregularities happen. Letting public contracts can be complicated, and I think today proves that point amply. The immediate question is whether we're going to award this contract. I think I already said I'm not going to be in support of that. I do hope we can get some consensus today about whether we're just going to drop that hot potato or come back. I have to gently disagree with the, any statements that we don't even need this contract. I want to be supportive of the original vision of our Health Services Director to put this contract out, to get the type of information he felt he needed to make valid decisions moving forward. I understand the Fire Chief's interest in being more fully involved if we do let another RFP, and I think having their presence on a ranking panel would be appropriate looking ahead. But I don't see anything untoward in this. And whatever miscommunications have happened, have happened, and you can't unring the bell on that. But I'm interested in moving forward. So I can't move forward with this contract today. I'm glad that some people think we're all on the same page about IFTs and EMCC, but I'm not there yet. So I just want to signal my support for the idea that this RFP was put out in the first place. It's unfortunate it's back a second time, and if it's going to come back a third time, that will be unfortunate, but it's not the end of the world in my mind. So, thank you.
Okay. Supervisors, Spatier.
I would suggest that we not move forward and not take another stab at it without a conversation with the Board on what exactly are we moving forward with. I want to make sure we don't duplicate. I want to make sure that we are approaching this in the right way. I want to make sure that we are doing the right thing for our communities. And so I would like to have another conversation regarding this as to how this would come back if it comes back.
Okay, is there action?
As far as I'm concerned, no action.
Yeah, that's where I'm at too at this point. And obviously, with the concerns with our public health department, the Fire, you know, our Fire Chiefs, yeah, I completely agree with them being on the panel if this does come back and continuing those conversations at this point. So, very complicated issue. Been on the Board for six years. I don't think there's been any easy solutions or conversations around these items. But, you know, as we're moving forward, we need to collaborate and communicate with each other. So I completely agree with that Supervisor Spatier and Supervisor Green.
So consensus to bring this back for a Board discussion before we move forward on another RFP?
So a Board discussion before anything else moves forward? Is that what we're saying?
Yep.
Okay. Yeah, because I feel too that the Chiefs, I've spoken, I've spoken with some of them, and they've done a lot of this work. They're working well with the North Coast EMS and things of that nature. And so I think if we move forward, some of the data, some of the information that they've conducted, it could be implemented and basically lower the cost, if you think of anything like that, you know, it might help. But, but yeah, no, I'm in favor of coming back.
Okay. All right, then we will close this item and we can finish our open session off with calendars. And thank you, Chiefs, for staying the morning with us. Who is ready to start?
I'm ready.
All right.
So had the Risk Reduction Authority meeting yesterday. You know, obviously, with the new meeting requirements, make sure folks are in place, always a challenge, but we're getting back to it. So we did have a, you know, a good meeting. We had a couple of small presentations. But with the RRA, we are in the transition as we're looking forward to get support after the... But with the RRA, we are in the transition as we're looking forward to get support after the Board support runs out. So we're continuing those conversations and looking at getting that solidified. There are a lot of grants out there right now that we have really gone out and worked with, whether it's through RCD or other agencies to support the Board going forward. And happy to say that we're hearing positive things, but nothing guaranteed at this point as we're doing that. And I think we have a solution with our staffing needs by, in the May. We'll have that completed, hopefully, to have full time agendas, meeting staff, those types of things. The support that this Board gave us, you know, through the end of this month, we should have everything aligned in May and be able to report back. I know we do have a report that needs to come back to the Board. We're looking at scheduling that as items are filling up, but it's probably going to be later in the summertime, but that's where we're at right now at this point. So you know, that was a good RRA meeting yesterday and there are constant grants and things that are being chased and worked on. So exciting about the way we're going to be moving forward. But the RCD is stepping up to help with some of those support issues and that's really going to simplify things as we move forward. So obviously Wednesday, I know if I can make it, I'll try and join Agenda Review. And then we have a Space Committee meeting that was asked by this Board Wednesday afternoon. So that's on our calendars, so we'll get that done. On Thursday, have the Disaster Council here in the chambers. I know there's a lot going on there. Obviously, everybody sees that Leah is moving forward with some of the hazard mitigation updates and meetings. You see those going out, which is excellent. And then Friday morning, CAO, tree mortality, Forest Health. Also, a lot of Earth Day events going on around the county. I think, you know, obviously Saturday in South County, you have the Cow Pine and the MAC Center putting something together. I think most of the day that day, I think it's 10 to 4, I think. I'm probably screwing the time up, but that's about it. And then I know the Big Valley Rancheria is doing something on Friday. So quite a few events, obviously, for Earth Day going around the county. Also, you've seen some of the proposals, the Clean California there's going to be this weekend. And Bruno, I'm jumping on your spot now, but there's going to be a cleanup day on the 22nd. It's a free dump day for large items and other things, which is just excellent. So, so we have, and then.
Eight to 12.
Eight to 12. Thank you very much. Yeah, it was in the newspapers. The Advisory Council's talked about it. Other things, Middletown Area Town Hall, I think there's going to be a cleanup day that morning too for the math in Middletown. Some small things going on. So, and then back here on Tuesday, the 24th for the meeting. And yeah, that's it.
All right.
I'm ready, Wayne.
Do you want to go, Michael?
Sure. Tomorrow, having lunch with Peter Windrim, who founded the Chai Council here in Lake County. Charming gentleman and one of our first citizen scientists. And as we're learning so much more this season about this wonderful fish and all the factors that are affecting it, having a combination of this rigorous science that the state agencies are working on, but really also embracing the idea of crowdsourcing data and citizen input. It's a good time to celebrate what has gone before us and Peter has definitely been a visionary on that. California Fishing Game Commission meets Thursday and Friday. I'll probably zoom in from time to time. I'm not aware of any hit specific items, but I haven't checked the agenda lately. Thursday, I guess there's an Emergency Medical Care Committee meeting with an IFT Subcommittee meeting. I understand there's been other meetings going on, so I'm going to go to that and listen in. I also have COC on my calendar for Thursday, but I don't know if that's right. Saturday at the airport, Lamson Field is the Clear Lake Aviation Gathering. It's a two day event. The Saturday event's pretty cool because I think they have a fly option to jump on a seaplane and go down to Lake Barriessa and back, or maybe it's Sunday. But anyway, it'll be a big deal. There can be lots of planes out there and lots of people who want to talk about planes. And so that's a good thing to see. And then finally, on Monday, the 24th, there is a Water Board Workshop coming up here in Lakeport to help explain what you need to report to the Water Boards when you have a water registration that requires reporting and also Scotts Valley Advisory Council. Thank you.
Do you know Sarah Kellerman? Do you know who that is? Either of you ready?
I'm ready.
Go ahead.
So just real quick, last week, I'll try not to steal too much of others' thunder. Chair Paeska and I were at the Ledge Conference for CSAC, one of their historic meetings where the Cal Cities, formerly known as League of Cities, joined CSAC for a homeless, I guess just conference is, or a homeless summit. The idea is figuring out how to work better together rather than what could potentially happen, which is cities are looking to the counties because counties get funding for behavioral health and other type of services that they don't. Let's not realign our dollars. Let's just collaborate and work together with the dollars we already have. And I'm going to be honest, I feel that we do a decent job. Could we do better? 100%. Is it difficult for us to afford to make the changes we need, such as having the shelters and the transitional housing? Yes, I think we have momentum going and I think we're going to continue to do better. But the City of Clear Lake has helped out with $500,000 for Hope Center, a shelter that is in the City of Clear Lake. And I know that the City of Lakeport is, obviously, we all approved and supported their application for the Navigation Center. They're looking to create something to help out with that and they've been sitting in in our COC meetings for the last two or three meetings now and obviously approached us and spoke to us about the benefits of the warming shelter last meeting. So I think that we're not siloed, but again, I think we can engage in better ways to ensure that we're moving forward at a greater pace and greater impact. Overall, I won't, again, steal anyone's thunder, but I will say that Chair Paeska advocates very well for our county and it was a pleasure to watch her at the CSAC Conference and speaking up for our needs. So thank you for doing that. Did join Congressman Thompson at Potter Valley. I'll just leave it at that and then let Supervisor Crandall take the rest. We did have our Middle Creek Restoration Committee as well the previous Monday and I guess I already talked about that, so I don't need to. Coming up, I have a, what is this for? Housing Solutions Innovation Summit coming up this week on Wednesday. Wednesday's pretty clear for a bunch of other things. Then I have the IFT EMCC meeting that I'll be listening into as well. I believe that you are the lead on that and I'm the alternate.
Yes.
So I'll do the listening. Unless you're not there. And then I have a meeting, I believe I've been invited by Well Path for our jail medical. I asked for reporting and they are doing a quarter two reporting session on Thursday as well. And then I'll be at the City of Clear Lake Council meeting that evening. And then on Friday, checking in with the Warming Center and working on everything else that I'm working on. Let's see what else is on Monday. Meeting with our Economic Mobility Leadership Network with NACO next month, just to make sure everyone's aware, on May 22 through the 24th, I will not be at that Board of Supervisors meeting. I will be in Arizona with EMLN convening. Later on that Monday, I am meeting with our CAO and somehow the coad got on my calendar, but I don't think I'll be making it to that and never have before. But that doesn't mean it won't happen in the future, but that's it for me until the 25th.
Okay.
All right. So I'll start off with the Wednesday meeting that was conducted over in Sacramento, hosted by the California Department of Natural Resources. It was a meeting with most of the different agencies at the table to discuss basically the support for the habitat of the hitch and the chai. One of the statements made by the tribes and of course, Lake County was that, you know, assisting us with the Middle Creek Restoration Project, ensuring that that moves forward more expediently will provide the habitat needed for the hitch in a long-term situation. And so we were brought together with EPA, Army Corps of Engineers, Department of Water Resources, Tribes, State Water Quality Control Board and Department of Fish and Wildlife. It was about an hour meeting. We had Water Resources Department Marina Del Giannis and Scott DeLeone online as well. And so we basically just gave our perspective as to how the Middle Creek has been implemented. We implemented the ad hoc committee and then the tribes discussed their outlook of it. And one of the final conclusions that we came to was basically going over Army Corps of Engineers and how we can move forward with that. One of the hiccups, I guess, we had was when the Tribe of Robinson actually had a land in a trust situation. We were worried that that would affect the outcome of the whole project in general, considering that some of the land was in the Middle Creek area that the county was supposed to have a full ownership of. So in talking with them about it, Colonel Caldwell was there on behalf of the Major General, which it was very helpful to have him there. And we were able to basically, you know, distinguish that, look, Army Corps had to have done this before with the Bureau of Indian Affairs or Secretary of Interior. We've asked our representative from Army Corps to look further into this and we're not blaming him, but what we were giving from their legal, from your legal department was a very vague answer that didn't really get us to a position that made us feel basically like we were in limbo. So they committed to having a meeting with us. The tribes felt the same way. They wanted to see another meeting. They desired a meeting monthly. We also asked if we could be in those meetings as well. We also have our ad hoc committee meetings every other month. So with that, we've been given some dates to have this meeting and see how we can expedite this and get everyone on the same page. That was the best thing about it. Everybody was on the same page at that meeting, regardless of how, what perspective it came from. And so it was a real productive meeting and I'm hoping that brings fruit and speeds the process, if we will, for this project that's been going for 30 years. Friday, as Supervisor Spatia said, we went on a tour to the Van Arsdale and Scott Dam with Congressman Thompson and PG&E staff. Basically, due to the seismic study and the letter that Congressman Thompson put out, basically talked about the history of the dam and the other dam. We looked at the structures and how they weren't necessarily ever really, what do you call that, refabricated or enhanced? And they basically are 100-year-old structures. And so as they gave us their insight as to why they're looking to decommission and all of these other statements that they were talking about in regards to this project and then also explaining to us why the gates are open due to that seismic study as well. So just basically a lot of riding in the hills, looking at the roads, looking at the trees that are coming down. So it was a real, I don't know, it was just a lot of riding in the trucks rather than looking at the projects and, not projects, but the structures in general. But I do know out of this, there is going to be a town hall on May 1st. Looking at the time still, and I'm sure it will be projected out. I know we're working on a meeting with Brad Onorato to schedule that meeting. Looks like it's possibly going to be at the Running Creek Casinos Conference Room in Upper Lake. And so looking to have that town hall with stakeholders and making it primarily folks from Lake County or interested parties in that faction because I was glad to hear Congressman Thompson state that it's not a lot of times that our interests are heard. So looking forward to that. I don't know if I covered everything, but.
And we will continue conversations with Congressman Thompson's office because a few ideas and thoughts came up during that trip. So I think the discussions was the greatest part of it, rather than just the tour and the visuals, but it was a good trip.
Right, right. Yes, that and they asked us on the ride not to wait till we got to the next point to talk about what we were talking about in the cars. So it was like one of those things like, whoa.
Never going to happen.
Right, so, so yeah. Looking forward, Wednesday tomorrow, Space Use Committee meeting, Western Region Town Hall. Thursday, I'll be here at the office conducting some meetings. Friday, same thing. Monday, CAO meeting, NACO leadership course and honoring, oh, this is important. Monday, the 24th, we're having the Honoring All Voices from 6 to 8 p.m. It's the, it's the result of our Community Visioning Forum Committee. And so this will be taking place here, right? I must have missed it, but I think it is here. It's here and it will be from 6 to 8 p.m. And so, let's see, childcare and snacks provided, Spanish and American Sign Language interpretation available as well. So there is, there is a Zoom, there's a Zoom, right? Yeah, there's a Zoom. There's a flyer. I'm sure we have it on our website as well or, right, or Facebook or website. And it'll be on YouTube and so I'm sure it'll be running. It looks like it says Facebook as well. So that will be that meeting. There also is projected dates for May 15th and June 5th to have follow-up meetings on that level. So that's the last thing I have for that Monday and then Board of Supervisors meeting the next day.
Okay, so yeah, I'll continue with the recap from the Legislative Conference. Supervisor Spatia and I attended the Ag, Environment and Resource Committee meeting where Chief Berlant was discussing the fire severity maps and the process that CAL FIRE is going to be going through as they adopt the maps, or I'm sorry, they approve the maps and then we will have 30 days to adopt the map. So that process is unfolding and he was very aware of our, most counties' positions. They'd received 1,100 comment letters that mostly said the same thing. So that timeline is underway, so we're going to have to be prepared to adopt that within 30 days when they come to us. The interesting part of that presentation was he started off talking about how tree mortality is, is an issue, which is the first time that I've heard that in a meeting, a state meeting, since we've started to experience here and how it needs to be part of the overall strategy for forest health for the state. So I did bring up during the roundtable discussion that I have not heard from other counties, you know, that there, I actually called out to, to let other counties know that we're having this issue and to please contact me and to please speak up if, you know, if they haven't quite recognized that they're having tree mortality issues. We did talk with Sierra, Nevada County. You know, they have 2, 1.8 million standing dead trees and didn't really even understand what to do with that information. So it was a lot of talking to people, talking to people with Department of Conservation, speaking with Assembly Member Agar Curry and her Chief of Staff, other supervisors. The supervisor from Siskiyou County who's now on the wildfire and Forest Health Task Force to try and get on their agenda. So lots of button pushing. I feel like there's some momentum now. There is the possibility of a working group coming together. So I want to bring that back for another discussion in the near term with all of you. We get that as an agenda item. All that said, came back on Friday and had to miss a meeting with MGE, our consultant, who we have engaged with to prepare our application for CAL OES, targeting our hazard trees. And the news that I knew was coming arrived. Our windshield survey from February of 2022 indicated that we had 4,000 standing dead trees along our county right of ways in the South County area, only Cobb to Western Mine Road and Jerusalem Valley. And we know that we've been looking at a number of $12 million. That's $3,000 a tree. There's 10,000 trees, which takes this to a $30 million project. So we knew it was going to be bad. I've been trying to prep Senator McGuire for that and our Assembly Member and Congressman Thompson to let them know that that $12 million ask was not going to be where we were going to finish. So that is disheartening, but expected. And so it's even more critical that we get assistance with that. We do have PG&E that's going to be responsible for a portion of it. We do have $10 million collaboratively out in CAL FIRE grants to help with this too. But at the end of the day, this is a big, big project and we anticipate it's going to take two years. But it's just not something that this county can handle on its own and I know that other rural counties around the state can't do it as well. And so this has, there has to be. And so this has, there has to be a big shift at the state to help with this. So sorry to deliver that horrible news, but I got it Friday afternoon. I'm giving it to you.
Good news was there's momentum.
There's momentum, and the project got way bigger. So that's that. But I was this weekend out at Six Sigma Ranch for the mountain bike races, which were both Saturday and Sunday, but only the Saturday races, Middletown and the Northern California teams, about 1,000 people each day for the entire league. And I think that's a low estimate of the people that visited our county over the weekend. So it's pretty incredible to see that, and they will all be back again in May for the state finals. Then Sunday, I was at the ravioli feed with Congressman Thompson, giving him this wonderful news about the standing dead trees. So it's already on his radar, but we're going to be following up, getting that new data into our documents and sending that out to everybody that we've already been sending it to. Oh, and also one more thing about Chief Berlant. He said that he's been receiving all of our letters and all of my emails. It would be nice to let them, for them to recognize that earlier, but that's okay. That's right. So this week, tomorrow, I have Agenda Review in the morning. I have a meeting with North Coast Opportunities. And then there is a CWA meeting in the evening, but I, I don't think I'm going to make it because of my dentist appointment. Thursday, Law Library, Disaster Council, and Cockberry Council meeting in the evening. And Friday, we have our Tree Mortality Task Force meeting, which is going to be great with this news. And then there's this watershed, California's watershed healing workshop. That is in Sacramento, I believe, so I'm not going to be going to that, but it is on my calendar. Saturday is Earth Day, but I'm going to have to miss the Calpine Celebration because I auctioned myself off to climb up Mount Knockdie for the Lakeport Rotary. So I'm going to be bringing people up there and packing a lunch and going up to the peak, which is great. Perfect time of year to do that. It's also the Kelseyville FFA plant sale, which is epic if anybody needs plants for their summer garden. That is a super great place to buy them. And then Monday, I'm a meeting with CAO Parker. Then the COAD has shifted their meetings to Monday, so hopefully I can attend and getting ready for the meeting to come back here Tuesday. So that is it for our open session today. We will take...
Can I add something real quick?
Yes.
And I just want, I forgot, this last Saturday, we had a cleanup day out at Highland Springs. The disc golf course got trashed during the winter storms, so there was a cleanup day. And I'd like to thank Fred from Water Resources and Caretaker James, who are kind of like our point people out there, but we had 30, 40 people out there, not all disc golfers, just random people coming by and started picking up branches. And it was very exciting to see that, exciting to see the community come out and do that. There is still lots of downed lumber on the course. There are still some minor hazards out there. So please, if you go out there and enjoy the park, please be careful. But really great to see people come out there and really great to see Water Resources take the point on that. Thank you.
But it's, it's the trails, too. It's not just the course.
Yes, but this was focused on, on the course.
Yeah, I know a lot of people have been out doing trail cleanup, too.
Yeah.
Okay, well, that is it for open session. We will come back for closed session. We have two items. We have the Public Employee Evaluation Child Support Services Director, and 8.2 is Conference with Legal Counsel Existing Litigation Pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D1, Earthways Foundation Inc. v. County of Lake et al. Thanks so much. Yes?
I'd like to say right now that I was, I do a lot of lookups, lookouts on the calendars upstairs.
Joan, can you come up?
Earthways Foundation was public record. I have it. I have it. And I'm...
If you need to, you need to come up to the microphone.
Okay.
And you can state your name. I guess this is public comment on our closed session items.
I've never done that before.
This is...
Joan Moss, I do keep a tabs on what's public record, and this Earthways Foundation versus County of Lake was on the calendar on the fourth floor. I have it. I have the pages. I have the case management meetings about it, and it wasn't scheduled to come back until May 22nd. And it is about the Lucerne Castle. I believe, since Elizabeth Larson blocks me out of her paper, that it has things that didn't get in Elizabeth Larson's scandal-mongering paper. I will say that. So it's very important, and I'm going to report on it.
Okay.
What you do say. But I want to honor this and tell you that this was public record. It was on the fourth floor.
Okay, thank you.
And just for clarification, that portion is not part of the board action, open to the public following closed session.
Correct. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.